Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood-Clydesboro Mayor and Council. Today is August 9th, 2017. The time is 8:15 PM. Madam Kirk, please have a roll call.
Here.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Here.
E. Park?
Here.
O.?
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
Here.
Thank you. Let's start this meeting as we always do with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Regarding the minutes of the July 12th caucus and regular meeting, let's do the Open Public Meetings Act statement first. Madam Kirk, would you do that, please?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda are the minutes in the July 12th caucus and regular meeting. Council members have received them. If you've reviewed them, please have somebody motion them in and approve them.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Thank you. There was no correspondence for the period. And next up is the claims for the period of July 13th, 2017 through August 9th, 2017. I'm going to ask our council finance chairperson to discuss this. Councilwoman McMorro, would you do that?
Yes, Mayor, I've reviewed the claims for the period of July 13th through August 9th, and I move that they be paid.
You need a second?
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Thank you. Everybody on council should have received department head reports. I'm hoping that you reviewed them. Does anybody have any questions? Have a motion to open up to the public, please.
Do you want to point the word?
No, you may not.
To improve the bill without giving us the number?
Ma'am, you could come to the public portion at the microphone, but not right now. That's disruptive. Have a motion to open up to the public, please.
Sure.
Do you have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before I call up the public, I just want to mention a few things. Most important tonight is we're trying to approve the introduction of the bond ordinance for Whitney Field. I am wholly supportive of this. We have introduced the project last month by a four-to-three vote. So now we're working on the financing, and we want to get that done for our children by springtime. The other thing is, and Councilwoman McMorro will speak more about this later, Community Night Out is August 22nd. Last year, it was wonderful. It was a lot of fun. I encourage everyone to come out. Unlike any other events here last year and this year also, I've asked the Office of Concerned Food Pantry from St. Cecilia's Church in Englewood to come up with their truck, park it, and I really would appreciate it if we could donate more food than we did last year. Last year was great. This year should be even better. You know, I always say here that we have a fraction of the problems that the rest of the world has, and we create our own. There's a little fly floating around here right now. Just your takeaway from tonight, no matter what else you hear tonight, no matter what other noise is made, just take this away with you. We have 920,000 residents in Bergen County, and 8.8 percent of them are food insecure. And that represents 81,000 people. So if you come on August 22nd, please bring some non-perishable food items, and we'll go and donate it immediately to people who could really use those food items. The other point I want to make, a lot of people leave before we get to this. The ambulance is back in town. Englewood Hospital Medical, Emergency Medical Services has a bay now in Hudson Terrace where our old volunteer ambulance corps used to be. They are now servicing our town. What was happening was the response times were going up over the last couple of years, and we were trying to bring those response times back down. And I appreciate our fire department, who I know is active at times also with them. And I think what's happening is actually people are getting off 95 on the way to the bridge because of their navigation programs to avoid traffic, and they're coming up Palisades Ave and creating more traffic coming up from Englewood, so it's slowing down the ambulances. So I think that's the law of unintended consequences. People have less traffic to get to the bridge, but we have more in town now. So I'm hoping that all works out. Please welcome them when you see them. They really work hard, and they're working for us. That said, anybody from the public who wishes to be heard, please come up to the microphones, state your name and address, and tell me what's on your mind. Okay? Yes, I'm going to call on you first because you jumped in before. I'm going to...
Deputy Mayor, if we're not hearing anything, yes, I'd just like to ask, what is the amount of bill?
I'm going to ask that.
If you have a bill list and you have a total account again, and that amount should be announced when you're making the motion.
So we usually don't do that. I'm going to defer this to Borough Attorney and also to our Finance Committee Chair in terms of what they...
I'm going to defer to the Borough Clerk who writes this up and tells me what to read because I just read like everyone else has been reading beforehand. So you're saying that, I know you're a former Borough Clerk and Administrator, so you guys...
Well, actually...
I'm still an Administrator.
Well, actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to defer to our Administrator as well, so...
She is correct. It really should be on our agendas when we adopt it. We should be stating the total amounts of our bill list. If it's out of operating, we should say the operating and its capital we should say.
Okay.
And if you're spending out of trust, we will make that adjustment to our next budget.
We told that as a council person to read that.
I'm clarifying that, ma'am.
Thank you. Come on, you got it.
So is that if you have the list, I mean, my packet was not that one, and you can read the total?
I don't have it.
Yeah, the clerk is going to look it up right now.
No, I don't.
Oh, you might have it.
Not, no.
Ask the Borough Clerk? I have what was given to him.
But you never got a copy of the bill?
Yes, everyone has a copy of the bill. It was emailed to them.
As I said, I was never told that I needed to read that or rely on the administrator and saying that you are correct and was never told to me going forward.
She wants to know what the county is, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll ask the Borough Clerk to give us the...
Let me see if I can... I don't have it.
I'm going to continue while the clerk looks this up. If she has it, we'll give it to you. If she doesn't, we'll give it to you tomorrow. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Steiber. I live at 754 George Street. My comment is that at the last meeting, which was July the 12th, there were new options apparently proposed for Whitney Field, which were only first discussed at the 6:30 PM caucus meeting. So if you did not attend the caucus meeting, you didn't know what the options actually were. And then, the option was presented for voting, and so you didn't know the details of the approved option. The residents never had an opportunity to ask about LED lights and how they would affect the residents who live immediately across from the field, in other words, on Johnson, Sanford, and Floyd. So I'm still very concerned about the effects of these LED lights, how tall they're going to be, and how long they're going to be on, and are they going to be on all night or they turn off at 10 o'clock? So maybe now that we have Andrew over here, he can answer some of these questions because I'm still very concerned. I live on Floyd in the cul-de-sac. My property borders on the field.
Andy, you need a microphone. So I'm assuming that you're going to answer these questions. Thank you.
Do I have you?
Okay, thanks. And I thought we could go over it all in the regular meeting and also talk about the full cutoff, but it's okay. He's going to do it now for you. It's okay. Thank you.
So at the council, you approved what we call Option 6. Option 6 is the synthetic turfing of the, what I refer to as the softball field. So the entire softball field will be synthetic turf. The remainder of the complex, just same natural grass. The grass will be removed. We rehabilitate the existing soil by adding sand, and we re-saw the rest of the complex, rework the playing fields, and redo the mounds in its own place. And then you compose lights at the softball field, so that back lawn is filled. It should be either LED lights or a metal halon light or high pressure sodium light depending on the cause, but LED was what was in the proposal.
I believe also it's been on the website for several weeks now.
It's been on there since we...
Right.
I have a question for Don Wood.
So I think we're mixing ideas. Yeah, you have to first approve the bond ordinance, then we can start the design, and then the policy of going on and off will be this... Not on the interior. They haven't signed yet. So the design will happen once they approve the bond ordinance.
Rest assured, they're not going to be on all night, as you mentioned. I think most towns cutoff automatically at 9:30, 10:00.
A lot of towns are 9:00, but I mean, 4:00, 9:00, 10:00 almost every town.
Right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, why is the softball field, the one closest to the...
I'm sorry, you have to figure a name and an address.
I think that actually qualifies for a street that looks at... Oh, which is the softball field, the one closest to the corporations?
The basketball courts.
The back?
Yeah, in the complex, we refer to the Little League baseball field closest to the road on the existing Snack Shack. The baseball field is the back far left, and the softball field is the back far right closest to the...
Closest to the...
Closest, right in the right direction. By basketball.
By basketball.
And we're also talking about the full cutoff LEDs, right? So there's no lights, right?
Right, the lights proposed are full cutoff LEDs, so full cutoff LEDs have zero shows.
Zero shows.
Wherever the lights is not to cutoff, it's zero on one side, it's wherever the zero show is.
Okay. Thank you very much, Andy.
Can you...
Yes, sir.
Joe Ramon, Sixth Central Drive. I wasn't here for the meeting, because actually someone's playing a baseball game somewhere else. Are you just talking about the field itself or use the track? You can do the whole park itself.
So the current proposal is to rehabilitate everything inside the field, as far as the track around it, we're going to reclaim it and re-repair, but we're not basically...
But if you can borrow all the money, you can borrow money. I mean, do it right, but don't do it at all.
Well, we believe we are doing it correctly.
Yeah, the whole track is a big part of the park, not just the fields. I understand the fields are for kids, but the track is just as much, there's people walking on that track.
You can get bid as a whole, just merely available.
What was contemplated was that we do it in stages.
Correct.
Right.
Andy has a good point, but he's saying just put an alternate bid in and then see what the numbers come back at, and it's...
Look, I'm fine with that. I wanted to do the whole place, but it didn't work out that way.
If you have construction, might as well do it all at once.
The funding has to be in place.
You need the funding. We don't want to delay what we do have approval on, but we...
Park grants from the state that...
No.
For park rehabilitation.
Or not. So actually, while we're on the park, I know, and this came up again today because people called me and they said that the former shade tree commissioner was handing out letters saying that we're cutting all the trees down or we're not going to save them during construction and that we're a bunch of idiots, we don't know what we're doing. Rest assured, we love children.
That's not what the letter said.
We love children.
We have a copy of that letter, and that's not what it said.
We love our children, and we love our trees, and I assure you, once again, this is the third meeting in a row I'm doing this. We are going to preserve all the trees and the donations for the plaques that went along with them. We have absolutely no intentions of cutting down trees, but you know, if people are going to spread fake news, I don't want to identify you, but you just identified yourself. So, look, we're going to have nice trees and a nice park, okay?
And that's great.
Anybody else? Yes.
I have another minute.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, you already went. I have to ask other people first. Yeah, all right, yes.
Good evening, Jerry Miss on Sanford Drive, and of course, about the park. I'm scratching my head a little bit because when we started this whole thing, we wanted to get a lot of public involvement, and we had several meetings, and the public was invited to comment on the plans and review the plans and see what we were all up to. And then we went ahead to the July 12th meeting, and some people were there, and a lot of the public was informed that we were going to have a bunch of new plans, and lo and behold...
Jerry, I'm sorry, I can't do it.
And lo and behold, that is one of the plans that gets approved. And nobody knows what's in, apparently.
That's not correct. And the plan that was approved, Jerry, was a variation of one of the plans from the original presentation, which we had multiple meetings on. And in terms of, as I mentioned earlier, we discerned a process through feedback with the public, through many meetings, many hours, to a point where we were not going to use synthetic from rubber infill. We're going to use an organic product to alleviate those concerns. And so it was a matter of discernment and compromise, and this is how we ended up with this. I'm sorry, I dropped it.
It seems to me that we've gotten to a point now where we've adopted a plan that was above the budget, that wasn't one of the plans originally discussed in the public meetings, and that is ultimately, seems designed to fail. I don't think you have the votes to get this funding through. It's not going to happen. So, and what leaves me scratching my head is we have three people here who are for renovating the field, in public and private, they've told us that. In public and private, some of them even told us they're open for turf. In public and private, they've also told us that some of them are open for lights. It seems to me that if they're all interested in doing that, there could be some consensus built here. Instead, we picked the one plan that seems designed to fail. So do we want to do a field, or do we want to have a political campaign where we can now send out flyers that say, "Eda Burson, Gloria O., hate kids and hate Little League witches." I know that flyer is...
I think you're mischaracterizing a lot of things. Three people voted no, three people voted yes. I broke the tie, okay? Because I, personally, I believe that our town needs the project that we approved. Councilwoman McMorro is the finance chair. I'd like you, recreation chair as well. Want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would like to add, Jerry, it's unfortunate that you weren't at the last meeting, but as you know, we had several meetings on this subject. So I just wanted to update you on what you may have missed, and I don't agree with your characterization. If there's a perception out there about my colleagues, then they have to own what they're doing, it's nothing to do with me, okay? But this is about helping the town and moving the town forward. Let me let you know what our discussions were, because I did go back and watch the tape because I'm hearing what people are saying out there. I'm probably the only one up here that goes to all the games, that goes to the championships when they're in Ridgefield Park, when they're in Westwood, when they're everywhere, okay? So I go and see what their needs are firsthand there at other fields, and when they're home here. And what happened was, I did listen to my colleagues. I went back, and you can go back and watch the tape. And what they did was, they requested these four, that Andy Hippelit was kind enough to go back to the drawing board and try and come up with variations that would make them happy. We did what they wanted to. They wanted, excuse me, you can respond, but Ellen, I did go back and watch the tape. What they asked for was, can they go back and find a variation with the least amount of turf, okay? And getting the job done, covering what we need in coverage, making the field safe, and letting us start the project. Because what we missed, Mr. Hippelit reported, was presently, we have an unsafe playing field. It's not safe, okay? We have to address this for the kids, seniors, everyone, all residents. So we went back, and he came back with these four plans. This is not something that we just said, oh, let's find a plan that they're not going to like. We did what they wanted, okay? Please, guys. So we came back. In fact, my first, when I read these four until I heard what everybody else had to say here, and Mr. Steiber and yourself, were at the forefront of my mind because you, the people that are right there in the immediate, are going to be the most affected, and I get that, and I understand that, and all of you were in my thought process, and that was why, after seeing the four plans, and you can look at these, Sarah, I can leave you right now, but originally, I had thought to pick one of the other ones. But when we thought about where the lights would be least intrusive to everyone, I think you know what? That's a great idea. Let's move it to the softball field, because the corporations already have their parking lots lit up. They're already lit up. So you're going to put lights in a place where there already are lights in the back. And hey, isn't it great that if we're lighting up this field back here, that if the big comes back properly, we can then light the basketball courts up? All the activity's going to the back of the park. I, myself, I can only speak to myself, thought we were giving them exactly what they were asking for. 22% to 24% of turf, Andy, I don't know how many percentages, okay? Where before it was more than double that. So we did everything that they were requesting. I'm shocked to hear, and I was shocked when they voted no. I'm quite disappointed, to be honest with you. Everything is a compromise in life. You have to find, no one gets 100% of what they want, but we have to move forward. We've been talking about this issue, you know how many years...
Instead of giving them what they want, what about including them in the conversation?
They were including, watch the tapes. You're wrong. You're wrong, I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Flora, no, he's actually still speaking. Are you done with your comments?
I have a couple more things, but if I can hear...
All right, go ahead.
We did have multiple meetings. Yeah. At which, those multiple meetings, we were told, we were, Andy gave us an option from $2.5 million to $4.5 million. We met for six months, and all along, we didn't have the money. We didn't have enough to bond for that amount of money. So two months ago, we sit down and say, you ask the Borough Administrator how much we can bond for, and it came out that we only had $1 million. And so we asked Andy to go back for an option for a million. So all along, Carol, you're the head of the finance chair, correct? That's absolutely correct. You're the head of the rec department, correct? Absolutely. And so we had multiple meetings over the renovation of $4 million, right? So that was all wasted. Came back one time with four options. We sat down during the caucus meeting, and then there was a vote at the regular meeting. So when, I feel that we really didn't have a discussion. It was either Option 6, and you vote, and that's it.
Actually, to have the, to get to the process that we went through and to the result, nothing's wasted, because if you're discerning something, then there's all these inputs that you have to consider, and that's exactly what we did.
If you can't afford something, why would you entertain that for six months?
Well, that's not entirely true. You're just kind of backpedaling, and I understand that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if she were...
Well, actually, other people need to weigh in before you go again. That's the way Robert's role is worked. Does anybody else want to say anything before Mr. Miss continues?
Well, just one thing that I want to bring up. So at, Mr. Miss, at the last meeting, when we were here during the caucus meeting, we were discussing the four plans, and we were kind of going around the table, you know, talking about what the thoughts were on the council, you know, what we liked out of the four plans. So we basically came down to old grass, to infill, doing the turf, and then the option that, you know, we voted on at the last meeting. So from the caucus meeting to the general meeting, somewhere along the line, we weren't part of the discussion, but the people on the other side of the room, I hate to use, you know, "they," you know, but they decided that they want to go for this one plan, and we were not part of that discussion. So somewhere in the room over there, it was decided, and then we took a vote. May I just want the approval to...
Go ahead, let's hear from Mr. first.
So I don't really care what anybody else has to say about...
Use the mic.
I'm sorry. Listen, the bottom line is, my questions weren't answered. I asked the engineer to answer the questions, and he did his best he could, but it doesn't solve the issue. The issues are playability, drainage, and all we do is replacing 20% of the field. This is my concern last meeting. It's my concern this meeting, because no one spoke to me about how that's changed in that time. We still have a maintenance issue because, as the engineer said, we, you know, to have natural grass, according to him, is not going to work on this field. Yet, we're going to pay $1.3 million for a project that gives us 80% of natural grass. So unless we're going to budget to maintain that natural grass properly, and if it was $75,000 at 100% grass, I'm not a mathematician, but take 20% off of that if that's how you want to figure it out, which is kind of baloney anyway, you still have to maintain the field. We're still going to pay to maintain the field. The kids are still not going to be able to play when it rains, except for that little patch of turf, and we're not going to resolve any of the issues we already have. Because in that $1.3 million, not one time has the engineer speak about solving the drainage issues. All he's going to do is take out the top six inches of soil, put sand in, that's not the answer. I ask for the proper solution to be done in natural grass, do the field properly, do the proper drainage the way it's supposed to, spend the money the way it is, the way we're supposed to, and maintain it the way we're supposed to. This way, we're going to pay through the nose to get it done. We're still going to have to pay for maintenance every year, because we're still going to have 80% or 85% of natural grass, and it doesn't resolve any of the issues. So for me, I'm not spending your money on a project that is not going to work out, and I don't see it as...
Andy, do you want a comment?
For nothing to do with safety, my favorite, we have a perfectly safe playing field with all natural grass if we maintain it properly. Right now, nobody's maintaining that field. I was up there, it looks like garbage.
Andy, do you want a comment? I mean, I think there's some inaccuracies...
You're selling us something that's not correct. So if it's not, I'd like to know.
So I, I think what you have is the accumulation of a lot of months of meetings, so because I'm in this every day, it becomes very simple to me, and I can kind of work my way through it. So what you have on this project is as follows. You have about one-third of your complex, the back half, but the softball field is going to be synthetic turf. That's going to have a running rain drainage system in it. It's going to be playable in rainstorms. If it snows, you definitely could plow it off and play on it. It gives you more playability, so that field can be used a lot more when currently it can't be. Your Little League field and your Big League field and your soccer, one part of your soccer field will be natural grass, and the outfield portion of the soccer field is going to be synthetic turf, or the softball is going to be synthetic turf, so you can now play soccer out there also. So what happens on this complex now is as follows. Your synthetic turf area can be overplayed, rain, bad weather, and you want to rest your grass, because you can schedule games back there, and increase the amount of time you're playing, you increase your playability and the times you want to can play now. That allows you to rest your grass areas and give them enough maintenance. Are you going to spend money on maintenance? Yes, you're probably going to spend, in my estimation, I think, your number, $50,000 a year is probably a good number, because you're still going to have a lot of grass. And that was a decision you made to not spend that $2.2 million. You're still going to have a lot of grass, and you're going to spend that cost over the period, whatever you extended. As far as the drainage on the remainder of the complex, though, the drainage under that complex that currently exists is good. The problem is, the water can't get to it because the top six inches of soil has been compacted and soaked up, so it's not being utilized. So what we're going to do is, what we've done successfully in numerous fields, is
done successfully in numerous fields, is go in and remove that soil, keep some of it, rehab it by adding sand to it, connect back down to those drains, I've covered those drains, there's an extensive drainage system under that entire grass complex, and then put new soil into allow water to get to that field, with this synthetic turf field, you're going to get more playability, if you, as I said at the other meetings, if you went with all grass, the only choice you had, based on the study you authorized, was to reduce your play, because you don't have, you can't, the field can't take the wear, so now by adding at least thirty percent of the complex into turf, you now can increase play back there and kind of give the grass some time to rest, is this the best solution? I mean, I think it's a really good solution, clear, you've got safe playing fields that drain well, they give you a lot of options, keep the play in the front of the back away from residents, unfortunately, CNBC, so, I think for the money you're spending, you're getting a lot.
But Councilwoman Versa is stating publicly that with this choice of plan, that we are not addressing our drainage issues.
No, we didn't redesign it, you have the authority.
Counselwoman Versa, has your question been answered then?
Not to my satisfaction, because I still don't see how the...
The drainage question, the drainage question.
Well, Andy spoke at one other meeting where he said the drainage was probably an issue, it's old, it's probably clogged, and lost it up in the bottom, and...
Well, I remember him saying, I remember him saying he's going to address it, like he just did.
The entire complex, inside the fence, we're going to address those drains, that's part of the estimate for that.
Right, so I think you've really answered that very well, the answer.
Very well, actually.
Right, so now, it's to you.
Why can't we do that entire grass field then? If that's going to resolve the issue...
No, 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 you can't, so, again, I want to clarify, you can make the whole complex grass, as I said at the other meetings, the whole complex could be grass, the issue with all grass is the play that you use that field now is too much for all grass, so either you have to, either you have to take some of the complex and make it synthetic turf, or reduce the amount of play.
Too much, you said.
Let's have...
I hear you, Andy, I don't agree with you.
Well, that's different now, if you don't agree with it.
I understand.
Mr. Miss, go ahead, continue.
The issue of usage, this thing was done without any clear identification of what our usage actually is.
That's not true.
That's not true, sir.
Well, Andy told us at the meetings where he got his numbers for usage, and he basically relied on some people telling him, I think it's this much, I think it's that much, we never really kept...
No, I think you're mischaracterizing it, Jerry, respectfully, at every meeting I've been to, those numbers have been gone over and gone over and drilled down on.
The first usage, the first usage we received from the rec director, we had usage, we used those numbers, the new rec director came in, you look into them, they actually were much greater, there was actually about a hundred more plays per year there, so...
There was also another meeting where it was decided that we would discuss with the board of education, possibly using their field to coordinate usages, and, by the way, I live across the street from the park, and you talk to me about laying off for two months, that park is empty in July, it's empty in August, except for a couple of possible pickup games, there's nothing going on there, there's your two months of the hottest point, now, with the other four months that you would use, May and June and September and October, if you shared some time in usage with the field behind the other schools, I think you solved the problem, and you do it all with natural grass field, and you do it all a lot less expensive, I think that should be looked into before you spend a million three, which is more than what you budgeted, on a field that's not going to solve some of the most major issues here.
Right.
If you're doing all the grass, it's going to cost you...
Three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, I think, was your estimate.
Okay, all right, I need to, Jerry, I need to have other people come up, and by the way, folks, you got to hold your applause, it makes no sense to applause to keep this town backwards from progressing, you should be applauding a good project here.
They applaud a good project.
Mr. Miss, we need to have somebody else be heard, anybody else wishing to be heard?
Zero, what is it, zero something L E B, I forget what you call them, zero cutoff L E B does not remove the cars from the street, and that's the issue, it's not the lights village, it's the use of the park with residences right there, so people are going to be in that park.
Jerry, you bought a house next to a park.
I bought a house next to a park that did not have lights and natural turf.
That had cars, right?
It had cars there until a reasonable hour, hey, we're not, I didn't buy a house next door with industrial sports complex, so people are going to be parking there for all hours of the night, so don't tell me where I bought a house, I know where I bought a house.
We're trying to work with each other.
If they built this across the street from you, you'd be as angry as I am.
No, I wouldn't.
Absolutely.
No, I would not, I'd be in that park every day until ten o'clock at night.
Well, that's been empty all summer.
The rest of her mail, I'm going to play by the Anglicus Police Department.
What's your name, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm here as a co-chairman of Anglicus Police Department PVA Bargaining Unit, and represent all the officers of Anglicus Police Department, with the exception of the Chief of Police, I'm here to express the bargaining unit's concerns, the unit has always been opposed to the creation of a position of Public Safety Director, we made our position known, we've articulated the reasons why we feel this position is unnecessary, we're making this public statement so that it is known, we oppose the creation of the position of Public Safety Director, as you know, the police department is short-staffed, and the governing body has stalled in the hiring, in hiring replacement officers.
Excuse me, hold on, so, you're blocking people behind you, can you come to the aisle?
I'm fine, people are behind me.
No, I'm not really fine with that, come to the middle, it's orderly, thank you, go ahead, I'll sign.
The patrol division is the backbone of our police department, and this is where taxpayer's money is best spent, Public Safety Director is not the answer, what the state agency needs is more boots on the ground, furthermore, the bargaining unit wants to express their opposition with Councilwoman McMorris on many police-related matters, we feel that she has a conflict of interest in all matters pertaining to the police department, there's pending litigation between bargaining unit and the governing body, specifically Mayor Carrion Jack and Councilwoman McMorris, we feel that they both cannot cast votes impartially, we remain committed to the borough and its residents, we will continue to always work for the best interests of the community, we're making this statement because we feel it's the best thing for Anglicus.
Excuse me.
Thank you, and I congratulate you also.
Can I ask a question to the board of directors?
I just want to say one thing also, years ago, your chief fully supported a Public Safety Director, so you should go back and look at the history of that as well.
I'm not here to speak for the chief.
Totally different guy, that's twelve years ago.
Who are you?
I'm not here to speak for the chief of police, I'm here to speak for the bargaining unit, so whatever, the bargaining unit doesn't agree with it.
Okay, I understand that, and by the way, I've been trying to meet with the PVA since the last meeting, Officer Ford came up and asked for a meeting, so, whenever you guys are ready to meet, I'm ready to meet, even if you want to do it tonight, I don't care when you want to do it, just let me know, you guys asked me to meet, and I'm available, okay, so let me know.
Yeah, I'll speak with the members of the unit while we have them.
You're all together, let me know, but again, I hope you appreciate my position also, Officer, we have so many litigations against this town, many are frivolous, but now, what I'm finding is that your rights as a group are being violated in those litigations, and I'm dealing with it, I don't think you guys were here for the caucus meeting, but you would agree with me that your protected health information, your confidential information should not be, your internal affairs information should not be disclosed by anyone, including your chief, in any litigation, self-servingly and irrelevantly, they were, okay, and I expect you to agree with me, and I'm fighting that fight for you guys, all right?
Thank you for your time.
Queen of voters, ma'am?
Brian Murphy, Mount Penn, New Jersey.
Yes, sir.
I'm captain here, two things, one, I want to know if my rights were violated last week when you were talking about me being dishonest, untruthful, corrupt.
That was never stated, your name was never stated, sir.
You got two captains and a chief here, and then you said two captains and a chief.
My position is that I don't have any, I don't have confidence in your senior leadership.
Stop telling me, go home and ask your husband if I'm a truthful, if I'm vicious, no, go home and ask them.
Queen of voters, ma'am.
Stick with the subject matter.
Queen of voters, ma'am.
Anybody else in the public?
Queen of voters.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Anne Marie, Anne Marie, I have a question for the board of directors.
Is this a constant question, again, that you always ask whenever needed?
Anne Marie, I have a question for you, is Councilwoman McMorris allowed to videotape the audience from the gas?
Well, there's no rule against it, but, there's no rule against it, and there's no rule for...
Okay, let's get on with the meeting, anybody else?
Do you have a legal opinion on that?
My name is Jeff Sardis, longtime resident, two fifty-six, Center Street, an active volunteer firefighter here from in the town for over twenty-two years, I want to thank you first of all for the opportunity to present the views of the volunteer fighter voting in our positions in this ordinance seventeen ten, since eighteen ninety-seven, the Anglicus Volunteer Fire Department has served and continues to serve with residents of Anglicus as the oldest volunteer organization in Anglicus, this venerable institution has always operated independently from, yet in cooperation with, the mayor and council, the proud men and women who volunteered their time and put their own safety at risk, and service their communities twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seek only to continue its multi-generational tradition, my fellow members and I regularly respond to threatening emergencies and put ourselves in harm's way to help protect our neighbors, we undergo extensive training and ongoing training, we have worked with each other for many years, we rely on our officers and training to ensure that we all arrive home after each call, as members, we do not seek compensation, nor recognition, but simply desire to continue serving the neighbors the same way this department has done for over a century, the reputation of the Anglicus Volunteer Fire Department is impeccable, it continues to act, to govern itself, in honor, with honor, purpose, and dedication to this community, the members of the Volunteer Fire Department unanimously request that the exclusion of our organization from this proposed ordinance seventeen dash ten, we would like to offer, if we could, a few questions for the council.
I want to thank you, and your men and women for your service, we, I know that speaking for the borough, we all greatly appreciate everything you do, you guys are phenomenal, I saw you firsthand in action last year at the villa under Hill there, but what I want to say is that the Public Safety Director would never interfere and cannot interfere with your day-to-day operations, the one thing that the Public Safety Director will do, as I've been wanting to do throughout my tenure as mayor, is to take the politics out of the workplace, and I feel that the police department, the fire department, have a lot of politics in there, which I think everyone will be better off without politics.
I think the response to your question, Officer, is, we don't want to be political, that's why we want to be removed from this ordinance, it's obvious that this ordinance seventeen ten is very highly weighted towards the police department.
I know, but you can't really say that with a straight face.
One of the various sections.
Look at your senior leadership, you have a president who's the police chief, his brother-in-law is your fire chief, and I respect you tremendously, George, you do a great job, but it's all so incestuous, we have to stop this.
We have volunteers.
I know, but with volunteers comes a lot of responsibility, too.
And what do you think we do? What do you think?
Unless you're recognized, please don't speak.
On behalf of the Volunteer Fire Department, I'm here tonight to ask a few questions regarding why we're including the ordinance seventeen ten, what needs have recently arisen to establish this governance over the fire department at this time, after a hundred years of independent administration, it's a question I'm asking, if I can answer, if we do it tonight, it'd be great, I'll see you later, has the fire department ever requested any assistance of the type that is specified in this ordinance, I don't think we ever have, we're having a need for that, what fire training-related and relevant experience with this new employee of the borough and the borough administrator bring to our organization, that's a specific qualification you have to have, are you willing to remove the fire department from this ordinance, I'll ask.
We are writing down your questions, and I'll have one for you at the end, go ahead.
If you're not willing to, if you are willing to work with us, before any action is taken, maybe by tabling the vote tonight, tabling the vote for the ordinance to seventeen ten, give us a chance to address all concerns, and if you're not willing to address it with us, I'd like to know why.
Well, we actually did meet with your chief and deputy chief.
At the time you met with our chief, there was no ordinance.
Well, there was discussion about the position.
There was discussion about the ordinance, it did not exist.
No, but there was a discussion about the position that we were contemplating.
I understand that. Never like what's written in the ordinance today.
I respect that, we are going to give careful consideration to everything you said, and I have one question for you before you leave, can you stand there right now and say that you have absolutely no politics in the fire department?
I can honestly stand and say that.
You can?
This is the first time I've attended a meeting.
No, 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 but, political influence is within your department, that's the question?
No.
No?
I don't see relevance to that.
Can I add to your question that I've made, please? If you look around this room, all people, we're taxpayers and everything, I think we've been to everybody's house, all those stories, this is the lobby, we put out a fire that almost cost her a house, this is Rizoli, same thing, this is Duffy, same thing, okay, this is Park, same thing, and you ask about politics, you're a Democrat, you might be a Republican, you might be a independent.
No, no, you're mixing tuition, operationally, operationally, I commend you guys.
But you're saying that there's politics.
Structurally, it's deficient.
But finish, you're saying that there's politics involved here, what politics is involved, if we're not fighting a fire, what are we doing, okay?
I accept his position that there are no politics.
When Mrs. McMorris and the rest of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Wood, Mr. Park, I asked about the job description, and they said there isn't any, okay, I said, how can I comment on something like that, sure, Mrs. McMorris?
It's a half-truth.
Why is it a half, which half is wrong?
Well, can I respond, that meeting, of course, it was not drawn up yet, but we met with you to see conceptually what your thoughts were, and you are not against it, George, we...
That is wrong, that is wrong, you said, you said you have no job description, I said you can't make a comment on no job description.
That's not true, George.
No, that's not true, Mrs. McMorris, you're lying, you're lying.
All right, all right.
I'm asking you, Mr. Wood, is that true or what?
That's not the fault, George.
That's not the fault, she's calling me a liar, and you know what, it's a safe zone, but...
You went after, George, you went after her, okay, she's defending herself, you went after her.
I'm attacking you, you attacked me in a way.
Okay, all right, all right.
I didn't attack him in any way, George.
Because, no, you didn't ask, just to confirm, you didn't ask for a job description, okay, and I said I could not comment without a comment, right, right, Wood?
But we talked about...
Okay, then where am I lying if she's not?
Hold on, you did say that, you did say that, but you said, you talked about the positiveness, no, excuse me.
No, there isn't any positive thing.
Ms. Fainell was there, and she can attest to this.
So what? What do you want her to say?
Believe me, she does not say, hold on.
Well, really?
Watch it.
Watch what?
You can't tell her what to say.
Councilwoman Wood, we talked about the, give us the opportunity, don't be a bully up here now.
Oh, no.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay. You are, we talked about the positiveness.
Just get back on track, yeah, let's get back on...
We talked about the positiveness of what could be from a Public Safety Director, and Ms. Fainell said how it can help with grants and paperwork, and how it can make your life easier, did we not talk about this?
We talked about grants, that's what I did.
And you thought that was a great idea.
I asked if she would write the grants, how is this being...
We thought it would help you, where's the net in there?
She's the Public Safety Director, she's a borough administrator, I asked her, is the borough administrator, she could write the grants, and she says, I would help with you, right, Wood, okay?
But we talked about positive things.
What positive, what positive?
Did we not talk about what positive things could come out?
Give me a positive, Ms. McMorris, give me a positive.
Hold on, let her speak.
We discussed administrative positives as it pertains to not saddling your paperwork and things that regard...
Right.
But that's what she's referring to as positives, we did discuss that in the meeting, all right, we did discuss grants, who asked if there was no Public Safety Director, would I help you if there wasn't, and I said, yes, I would help you.
So where is the heavy cake workload that I'm under, did I ask if I need help for that?
No, but I thought it was a positive meeting we had, you're up here and you're trying to act like we didn't have a good meeting, I thought it was a great...
It's okay, George, it's possible to meet with us, have a positive meeting, and not change your mind.
And let your friends know that we had a positive meeting.
It's okay, it's okay, just like when we met for your new pumper truck, okay?
The always comes up, the pumper always comes up.
We met for your pumper.
Somehow, Mr. Wood and Mrs. McMorris thought we could get it faster in December.
Well, we're getting it, all right, we're getting it, we're getting it, you know why we're getting it, because the town needs it.
Everything we can to make it less happy, but...
Mr. Sardis, I don't think the chief did your cause any good, but I am going to take all your questions, I'm going to take all your questions, and we're going to get back to you with answers for all your questions, but we're not going to table it tonight, I can't do that.
We'd like you to consider tabling to give us the opportunity discussing all the ramifications that we can make.
Well, what we can do is take all your questions, answer them, and then when we create the policy regarding the Public Safety Director, we will find a way to work with you, if it works, if it gets approved, we will work with you. I don't think you're recognized to speak, George.
Mayor will meet with us.
I'm ready to meet, guys.
Yeah.
So I'm ready to meet.
Two other times. Mayor will meet with us.
Meet whenever you want, guys, let's get to it.
Any available tonight?
Guys, I can meet with you whenever you want. When I leave here, if you guys are there, we'll meet. Bring the PVA, too, because I've been waiting for a month. Thank you, Mr. Sardis. Yes. Yes. I'll start, go ahead.
Dr. Matthew Dickow, fifty-five Gene Drive, just one follow-up comment. It's a beautiful picture on the wall, right? Saying thirty years after the Fire Department was created. And I hope the Fire Department lasts beyond this council's action. Because that's what you need to ask yourself. Are you willing to vote on a Public Safety Director over a fire department that's been around for three centuries? And in close control over the fire department that's never needed it, that's never wanted it? And that no other mayor, council, in the history of this town has ever thought relevant? So when you vote tonight on whether or not you want to include the Fire Department in the Public Safety Director position, each one of you think about that picture, and each one of you think about the guys, men and women behind me. At three o'clock in the morning, when everyone in this room is asleep, and St. Michael's Villa catches on fire, or we're down for seventy-two hours of Avalon and Edgewater, or on September eleven, EC Truck responded with six guys in it. They kept the trucks on the bridge, one thousand feet apart, because they didn't know if there was a bomb on the bridge. They'll blow the bridge up, and they didn't want to lose men and apparatus. So when you vote, think about the men and women behind me, think about what you're doing to the department, think about what you're doing to the town.
I'm not sure what you think we're voting on. We command you, let me finish. We command you, and we appreciate you, but you're mixing issues. You're mixing issues. You're political. Officer, please remove him, because he keeps yelling at us.
The ordinance gives power to the Public Safety Director...
Him. He's out. He's out. Hold on. Mr. Degror, you're out.
You're not going to remove him.
You're out.
I believe it, because you're out of order.
You're out.
The ordinance gives power to the Public Safety Director, as stated, to control the Fire Department at fire scenes, over their training, over discipline. You're asking an outside person to come into a volunteer organization.
We're asking an objective person.
We are objective. We've governed ourselves, we've done everything this town has asked of us, and more, regardless of Republican, Democrat, I'm a Republican.
You're mixing issues.
And there's Democrats and independents and all over the place.
What can I tell Mr. Sardis? What can I tell Mr. Sardis? That we ought to consider all his questions.
I want Mr. Wu, think about that picture, think about the men and women behind me. Mr. Park, do the same when you vote. Mr. Park, do the same.
Just, can I ask you a question?
No, I'm not done yet. Ms. Wu, same question. Mr. Park, Mr. Versa?
Don't worry about me.
You may ask your question.
Seeing what you just spoke, I think that's just really disrespectful. I was really listening to what you were saying there, and then you turned like that. But I'm going to, I want to speak to you, because I'm really taken aback by standing. I know these kids standing here, okay? Excuse me.
They are firefighters.
They are firefighters, okay.
You know what she meant.
Come on, stop. Really, stop it. My own child is the same age as I am.
Bring it down a little bit.
And he's in the police academy right now, okay? Yeah, I'm a volunteer, just like all of you guys.
I don't even care.
Who said that?
Mr. Manolio.
All right, remove Mr. Manolio, please.
Mr. Manolio is the most threatening to most of us here, okay?
We have to behave in a dignified manner, and that's not dignified.
I hear what you're saying. I'm listening to you. For myself, am I going to speak for myself? I really, well, we had a great meeting with Fire Chief Jones. I have no issue coming out of that meeting. Did you come away with a speech from that meeting that he had? The type of concern that you were having to think about? It didn't come through, I'm not going to tell you that.
That's right.
Right, but I just, but then I say, they need to know how we interpreted the meeting we had. It was positive, it was good. I only saw good come out of it. What I'm hearing now is something totally different. So, and I need you to know that. No, I mean that.
What was your take on the Fire Chief's response after last mayor council meeting, when he opposed the Fire Department inclusion before the seventeen ten?
He did do that after your meeting with him.
I was shocked, I was too high, first thing I did, I asked the borough administrator, were we at the same meeting? Did you come away with a different take than I did? And she was of the same feeling I was, and so was Councilman Wu, that he thought this was a great meeting. We had seen, because it was, yeah, there was no...
Was there any discussion with the Fire Chief after he expressed his concern?
There was no, I made the switch. We didn't have a plan drawn up yet, but we were talking conceptually, like, what did you think? Do you think it could help you? What we thought, and there was my take, there were no reservations to that, you know. So, and that's all, and I'm telling you that.
So, Doctor, what I want to mention, though, is, look, obviously, the Public Safety Director, the focus would not be on the Fire Department. Right? It would not be, well, it's obvious, isn't it? We have ten lawsuits involving the Police Department, and we don't have any lawsuits involving the Fire Department. So logically, you're not the focus of that. You just come under that umbrella. And I assure you, and Mr. Sardis presented very nicely as well, that we will not infringe upon your operational rights, or your discipline, or anything else that you mentioned. I assure you.
If that's the intent, can you add that into the ordinance, or can you work with us to revise it?
Sure.
We can do it tonight. We can do it anytime. We can revise it anytime. I appreciate what you said, and I want to work this out with you. But you're not the focus. Rest assured. Rest assured. The guys who know they're the focus know they're the focus. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Here's another lady.
No, I called on her. No, no, no.
That's all right.
I was going to make a comment.
You need to speak your name again.
My name is Natalie Ashwell, five first Street. I should just get a sign. I was going to make a comment and ask a question. I have three parts of what I'm going to speak, so I hope you don't remove me before that I'll try to be as quick as possible. It seems to me that, and I haven't been to all your meetings, I haven't been to your planning meetings, it seems like we're fixing the park, but we're fixing the park and not fixing the drainage. The population is not just littering, or soccer, or basketball, but actually, the residents in the community who walk on the park, who just want to go look at trees, who want to just be in the sun. And I get, and I understand that it's not just kids. Listen, you just made a statement, Carol, that shocked me. You said, "Our field is not safe."
He said it.
No, you said it.
No, I repeated what he said.
No, I started.
Okay, my kids played on that field with your kids, with everybody's kids on this field. So I'm just curious, does Major League Baseball play on turf or grass?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. You're putting turf on one corner of the field, and I might be one thousand percent wrong, but is this going to cost four million dollars to bond? Okay, how much is this project going to cost?
This project, you have one point three two five. And that's the whole project, just to clarify, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where is Fred. We are fixing the drainage, so please stop saying we're not. We are. So I'm not sure why, now, I don't get it.
Respectfully, okay. Do you have children?
I have two, and I have a toddler, and they play baseball, and they play soccer.
So I live in this town with my sons. They're now twenty-three and twenty-one years old. They play baseball, and they play soccer. And they play less baseball and soccer because of the drainage, and nothing to do with turf.
We're fixing it.
Hold on, hold on.
There's a false narrative. There's a false narrative. For once, it's her also, "We're fixing the drainage, okay? We're fixing," repeat after me, "we're fixing the drainage."
I'm not going to repeat anything now from you. Speak to people is so repulsive, I cannot understand how you're speaking to people.
Of course it is. Because you don't hear what you want to hear from me.
No, that's not it. That's not it.
Of course it is. Your facts are, your facts are all wrong. You come in with four million dollars. Nobody said four million dollars the whole night.
I'm asking a question.
Get your facts straight. Get your facts straight. You come to meetings, you participate.
I'm trying to...
But don't come in at the last minute and pretend you know everything, because you don't.
I'm not pretending I know anything. I'm asking a question.
Okay, go ahead, ask your question.
I'm asking a question. I'm asking several questions.
Ask your question one at a time.
The next question is, you're our council and mayor. You're elected by the people in this town to represent us on issues as such, correct? It seems like no one is listening. The Police Department, the Fire Department, everybody's coming up here saying to you, "Please reconsider." They're not saying, "Don't have the vote." They're saying, "Please reconsider having this vote until we get more information on the position and what it entails."
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with people releasing protected health information of employees? Are you okay with that?
No, I'm not.
No, no.
But you're saying, I'm sorry, Mayor, you're saying that that's what happened, right? Hold on, you're saying that's what happened, and the lawyer is saying that's not what happened.
So you agree with me?
And see...
He's the lawyer for the, he's the one who did it.
Aren't you a lawyer?
He's the one who did it.
Aren't you a lawyer?
I am a lawyer. I'm sitting next to my lawyer as well.
I understand that.
I'm not his lawyer, I'm the borough's lawyer.
I understand that. I understand that. It just seems like everybody is talking to one another, and nobody's listening. Listen, listen, every, the Fire Department is talking to you.
We worked it out with them just now. Did you listen?
No, you didn't. You said you wanted to be bullied.
We worked it out. Didn't you hear it?
No.
You hear what you want to hear. That's your problem.
No, actually, this is not a democracy, this is a monarchy, and you're the king and she's the queen.
No, no, we had forty-two years of that, and you bought into that, and you're part of that group.
I'm...
We had forty-two years of nonsense, and we're fixing it, and you people don't understand that we're fixing it.
You people.
You people.
You people. That's why you're talking to me with your hand like this?
Those people.
This people is the person who was...
Listen, you haven't said...
...your son's front door every day, so I'm not a people.
And we thanked you for that.
No, you didn't, actually. No, I did.
You have, we did too. You have no right to come here, misstate facts, create a false narrative, and just you, you know, fear mongering about fields.
I'm not fear mongering.
Yes, you are.
I'm not. You cut off everybody that is impressed.
You haven't gone to one meeting on that field, and now you're showing up after the vote, telling us what we did wrong.
I'm not saying you did anything wrong at all.
Then what are you saying?
I said you did something wrong, now?
All right, it's kind of twisted now. Anybody else?
You're disappointed in me? I didn't say you did anything wrong.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to be heard?
Thank you. Thank you for making this town exactly what you want it to be.
It's a great town.
But I think you called it a swamp, right? On Curtis Lee Wood, you called it a swamp.
We're draining it, yes. We are. Yes.
Could you repeat your name?
I'm sorry, I...
Penny Zola.
Thank you.
Obviously, I'm a Christian, so... Is there a thought as to what the salary would be for this possible new position?
We haven't gotten that answer yet, Penny. I'm still wondering myself where we're going to put it in the budget, so it's still a mystery, another mystery. We're figuring them out sometime. Does that help you? Because that's the answers I get, so.
I'm sorry. The question is, do we have a salary?
Okay, so, as has been said at previous meetings, it's fine.
Okay, if you all want to have conversations, you're welcome to have them, but not in here, okay? Go outside, come back.
There is no discussion about the salary, because the salary isn't in the ordinance. When and if there is a decision to actually put someone in the position, all of the issues regarding salary benefits, or part-time, or full-time, or anything like that, are going to be discussed by the mayor and council, it has to go into a salary ordinance. If it's going to be an employee, if it's going to be an independent consultant, he has to be hired by a resolution with an amount in it. So, yes.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Linda Baruch, Hollywood Avenue. Is this a done deal that we're getting this new position?
Public Safety Director? No, we're voting on it tonight.
Okay. Do you think this is a New York City? We are a borough of five thousand people that have operated for much longer than you live in New York, quite well with our Police Department and our Fire Department. That meeting is another person's fault, it's seen originally. This is not some giant community. We don't need to be paying a salary for yet another person, because it's really a vendetta against the Police Department, who's really served us very, very well.
Not true. It's not a vendetta.
You just almost, not fully, but almost, you said that when you gave, set your own under the umbrella, it's really not aimed for you. That's basically saying, "Well, it is aimed for you."
But it's not a vendetta.
No, no, that's different.
So, yes.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Linda Baruch, Hollywood Avenue. Is this a done deal that we're getting this new position?
Public safety director? No, we're voting on it tonight.
Okay. Do you think this is a New York City... We are a borough of five thousand people that have operated for much longer than you live in New York, quite well with our police department and our fire department. That meeting is another person called a senior reason. This is not some giant community. We don't need to be paying a salary for yet another person because it's really a vendetta against the police department, who's really served us very, very well.
Not true. It's not a vendetta.
You've just almost, not fully, but almost, you've said that when you gave... Set your own under the umbrella. It's really not aimed for you. That's basically saying, "Well, it is aimed for you."
But it's not a vendetta. No, no, that's different. There's a need, but a need doesn't create a vendetta. You said vendetta. I said there's a need.
Between you and the police chief, yes.
There's no vendetta.
We have operated...
It's all business.
We have operated in this community. I've lived here a whole lot longer than you. And we have operated very, very well in this community without needing this other position. And I think there are not a lot of people besides me who feel this way.
And I think there's a lot more people who disagree with you on that.
I do not bet on that. And I think you ought to put that one to a real vote. But the point is, you're not... You don't really listen to the people who don't agree with you. And that is disrespect.
No, I... I did that for eighteen months. I evaluated where we are. I evaluated ten lawsuits against the borough, against the council. I evaluated other lawsuits that arose from our police department. And I evaluated it to the point where I said, "How can we fix this?" I've asked borough council for advice, borough administrator, our labor lawyers, and this is what they came up with. Now, listen, from day one, I always said, "Just everybody come to work, do your jobs, no politics, and we're all going to get along." And that's not what happened.
Because that never happens in public government. Public government is always political. That's... That's a fantasy. Yours is political. Every one of you is political. We're all political.
Not when I go to Borough Hall to do the work of the people. No.
Of course, every government is such a person.
No. If you're that jaded that you think that's the way it should be, then I feel sorry for you. But I don't feel that way. I feel... I feel the taxpayers should get their money's worth and get efficient services.
But we almost never do.
Well, you should. And you should not stop fighting for that, okay?
I should not interrupt it.
Why don't you leave?
Oh, my God. Everything is...
One more time, you don't have... Miss Barone, you're going to be out, all right?
Everything really and truly is political, whether you want to believe it or you want to admit to it or not. And it's not necessarily something terribly, terribly negative.
Well, how do you suggest we fix the problems with the town?
I don't think you have one.
Okay. Well, that's also delusional.
No, that's not delusional. We've had a very good working relationship in this town. As I said, I'm here a lot longer than you are. And we have had a wonderful police department. We have had a wonderful volunteer ambulance and police department. We have operated very well, and we have not grown beyond those standards.
Let me ask you a question.
We're not a huge metropolitan unit.
Do you take... Do you take your medical records and share them with the world?
I don't know that I will leave you. The other man says the other thing. I have no idea.
The other man is the guy who did it.
The other kid, the other guy says he'll settle it in court. He's saying that he has the right to do it. I can't get into that. That's... That's the least... That's the latest of your...
Do you think it's fair to one of our police officers to have his medical records out there?
I don't think it's fair for you to attack the whole police department.
I'm not attacking the police department.
Yes, you are.
I'm fixing it because these people have careers that we have to protect, okay? They have families. And if senior management is the police department, which I told you last month, have no confidence in, can't get their acts together, we need to create somebody else to do it for them, okay? Thank you. Anybody else?
You don't have comment, and we do.
Yes, sir.
Charles, Churchill Road. I have an interview with the council for the Hollywood Avenue vote. And I've had some... I've had some very unhappy experiences here. And I don't think that they're going to be interrupting me when I say that I'm not happy with the police department and what they're doing. Regarding the fire department and being political, I can't get into specifics, but I... This all, this reverse of... You were on the council at the... Two thousand eleven we were voting in. So I believe you might be aware of some overlap where a member... A member of the police department became very much political in the police department case regarding a resident. And I think that there is a... I think it created a dangerous situation. I voted whatever about it at the time. It was not addressed. But the former mayor and council said very seriously. So I can't really speak about it. I think you probably know what it is. I'll be glad to see what you got from the meeting. But there's absolutely no need for it. I understand the fire department involved, it's a great job, but absolutely they're doing the right thing. End of story for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Maria Valari, Public Safety Director. I wanted to address what Mrs. Spare said about giving the numbers to all these things. I've been coming to these meetings for years. I never heard numbers before. So I'm not sure why all of a sudden we have to be attacked. You guys have to be attacked on that one. Next administration's been doing it, next year's been doing it. So I... I just feel, you know, what is this all about? Even if it needs to be done, then I think it's...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. But if it's supposed to be done, it will be. We will do it.
I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight, and I come to these meetings.
But by the way, you know, those types of hits just come at these meetings. There's a whole month in between meetings where people could call and say, "Hey..."
I have to tell you, it's really hard sitting here. I'm actually shaking a little bit. My God. I'm going to tell you just a quick experience, firsthand experience. So I was looking for Board of Health. I will not mention names, but I went... When we had our first, um, the flu vaccine, we had a wonderful thing where we went to people's homes and put naked to the clinic. And I will never mention names, but I was speaking to a lovely lady who was like, "Oh, how long have you been at the Board of Health?" Then I said, you know, "This long." And she said, "Well, are you happy there?" And I said, "Well, to tell you the truth, I'm not treated very nicely there." And she said, "Why not?" I said, "The only Republican in the whole building." And she said to me, this is a Democrat, and she said to me, "Oh, then you gotta go." Okay? So I want everyone here to understand, this is this, an extremely political town for far too long. And to attack this administration now is if this is the first time that anything is happening in this town is ludicrous. I had Mrs. Valaro spy behind my door when I was on the phone. And when I asked her, "Why was she there?", she said, "Oh, I heard something." Well, obviously, you could hear something because that is not a lie. Avon, please. I was not invited to birthday parties, to going away parties. Simply, it's... Listen, it's a record. You want it, I'll give it to you. I was... I was shunned from everyone. I mean, I... I don't really care. I don't need friendships.
Folks, really, why can't you just not speak when somebody else is speaking? Why?
They know. Mr. Valaro knows. He... He knows personally what happened. Please, I... Okay. As far as our children playing together, wonderful community. My son was sent to juvenile court for ridiculous... A ridiculous summons that he deceived in his own name. So don't tell me politics in this town. It was... It was so wonderful years ago. It was la la land here because we had a democratic control for how many years? I remember being at a meeting many years ago where one councilperson, a Republican councilperson, asked a question to Mr. Manolio, who at that time I think was the fire... Fire chief, whatever. And because of that person asking him that question, he said to that gentleman, "I hope your house doesn't go up on fire because the guest is not showing up." You know something, people? You need to stop. This is ridiculous. Let these people work. Let them do what they need to do. And when the time comes, like everybody else, you want to vote them out? Vote them out. But this... This is who's in charge. And show some respect for these people. That's all. By the way, the fire... The volunteer... The volunteer ambulance corps, they didn't want to be broken up. Does anybody know why they got broken up? Oh, we don't know, right? There were people fighting them. But it got broken up, and the reason we're with Englewood is because the Democrats wanted to get rid of the volunteer ambulance corps, okay? I... You know, but...
Why was that?
I can... I can tell you why.
Hold on, I'm asking the resident.
No, I don't... I don't know. I don't know. I know that they... I know that they wanted to have a relationship with Englewood. It has something to do with wanting to be involved with Englewood.
All right.
You know, you could talk... You could talk to the kids who didn't want to go.
The important thing is the ambulance is back in town, so.
So, thank you. I just want... I just want to say, "Look... Look at Mr. Tiller here." Obviously, there's something wrong in our town people. And maybe we need somebody to oversee what's going on here. That's all. What's wrong with that? How did this end? He could have gone to jail for thirty years. My God, when you think about it, it makes your brain want to explode, and then we have to hear this. Thank you.
Is anybody else wishing to be heard?
Melanie Son, thirty-three, Lindra. Once again, you know that I didn't vote for you, but as you say to us you want us to respect you, I would like you to offer me the same type of respect. In regard to Mrs. Valari's statement that she is the only Republican in Borough Hall or was, that's simply not true. Most of the people who work in Borough Hall are Republicans. Whether they choose to vote that way or not, I don't know. But they are Republican as far as their party. In regard to the ambulance corps, Mr. Mayor, um, the reason that we had to disband any ambulance corps, we didn't have enough people to manage it. We were withholding it, but it became too expensive. Englewood offered us something that they would come in and take care of us for free. It seemed like a good deal for us. And they were right down the street, and they promised that they would have an ambulance on site for us pretty much all the time. So that may be an answer to Mrs. Valari's question. It wasn't a democratic thing. It was a... It was a joint effort with the Republicans who sat... As a matter of fact, I believe Mrs. McMaro might have been on that committee. Thank you. Oh, can I just ask you another question?
Sure.
Mr. Hippel.
Yes.
Regarding the field, what... How did you deem the field to be, Mr. Spare? What is the criteria for that?
So you were at the meeting, it was probably about four months ago or so. We met with the committee, they wanted to report, and the field has everything from standing water to divots, the areas of vegetation, to base paths, center, concrete.
So that's...
The general safety is not there.
Okay. So my second question, in regard to the infrastructure. Initially, when that field was done, you were involved in it, yes?
I was here, yes.
Okay. So if you could... If you go and we spend this kind of money, and you're going to go down the six inches, which you said, and that will allow the drainage to work, how long is that going to last before we have to go back and we do that again?
So if the field is maintained properly, the rehabilitation of the soil layer, top six inches of that, soil layer, mixture of sand will make it work worse. That'll provide a connection to the drains that are below.
Right.
And you'll continue to work fine. When it happens over time, it's not... I don't want... You know what I'm saying, it's not just anything else. So every municipality faces this problem where over time, their field's been overused. Because the overuse causes confection in the soil. Because you can't shut it down, maintain it, top it, irradiate, hole punch it, add sand, it just keeps getting more confection. And this top six inches becomes concrete. It's... Time of mine. I think you heard the council, we got the appropriate mind to maintain the grass properly. They need... They need that now, whether they do or not.
So my question to you is, how long is this going to last?
Or maintain properly forever.
Yeah, forever. So we're never going to have that issue again with the confection of the soil?
No, because maintenance, you know, referred to, just like your driveway, right? The reason you seal your driveway every three or four years is because you don't want to rip it off your pavement. It will last... If you seal it privately, it lasts for like your house. Your field's the same way. If you maintain your grass inside properly, irradiate, hole punch it, put sand in it, re-solder it, resolder it, it will last forever. Ninety-nine percent of your property is built median.
Okay. And how much on average is that going to cost this year?
I think you were going to, the council were saying, if you left it all grass, about seventy-five thousand dollars a year. If you were to now pare it down and do partial synthetic turf and more grass, you're probably looking at about fifty thousand dollars a year. You have to maintain your grass. It's like your yard. People use sprinklers or verticalize, why? They want their grass for it.
So that's fifty thousand dollars we have to put in the budget every year just for the maintenance of the field.
You should have seventy-five.
It's in there.
You should have it. Now, whether you do the field or not. If you don't do the field, you need to put seventy-five. Seventy-five after you... So after you spend three hundred... Let's say, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, you need about seventy-five.
And is that a reasonable number, three hundred thousand dollars to actually do that field of grass?
The price was almost about... It was, you know, same thing, remove all... Remove all the grass that's there as we have the six inches, let the confection, drainage, resolder it, and keep it. Yes, it's based on the...
I wanted to talk again about the public safety.
Name again? I'm sorry. Can you... I know your name, but can you just repeat it for the record?
My name is Andrew Steiger. I live at seven, uh, Floyd Street. This is a very small town. The population is, uh, has a two thousand ten, was five thousand two hundred and eighty-one. We have a very low crime rate. Doesn't seem to need that we need public safety director. We don't even know what the salary was going to be for this individual. And I'm afraid that he might do more harm than good.
Or she.
Or she. Because he or she might interfere with the... With the operations of the police department. And as far as litigation, I don't think that litigation will be decreased. It may be increased because of the conflict between the public safety director and the chief of police. I'm afraid that you might interfere with the... With the operation of the police department. And we all depend on them, not only for crime, but for accidents that occur in this town. And we depend on them to work as a team and help the people of this... This town. So I don't... I don't see that this public safety director is... Is going to be useful and very worthy of it.
Anybody else? Yes.
Jennifer Sbarro, one oh six Hollywood. I just want to understand before I ask my question, is there another point where you'll be able to ask questions in regards to the ordinances? Like, will that be a separate?
Yes.
Yes. Each...
So what do I be able to speak about? I need to perform a talk today.
For the ordinance, you can only speak with respect to the ordinance. Right now, you can do whatever you want.
So I first... I wanted to ask the procedure here regarding being rice as an employee. If you're an employee of the borough and mayor and council, I don't know if it's mayor and council, does the mayor and council decide as a whole that they're going to rice an employee and then speak with that employee, rice them? Does it happen every time an employee makes a mistake? Does it have to be a specific kind of mistake? If the BA made a mistake tomorrow, would she be rice and brought... And made that public that there was a disciplinary action or conversation that was going to be had? Or does it only happen for certain occasions and certain people? I'm just trying to understand.
I understand, but this is really not the form for discussion of all of those questions that you just said.
Well, okay.
I understand you want to...
I'll make it a simple question.
Okay.
If the BA makes a mistake tomorrow on her budget.
Yeah.
Does she get rice and brought in front of the community for discussion?
First of all, no one's brought in front of the community. The law for...
Well, she was rice, and that was put in the notice to the public that it was going to be discussed. So everybody starts to think, "What did that person do wrong? How does it affect us? Why is it being brought public?" That's why I'm asking. No, it was made public when it was put in the agenda.
It's always put in the agenda.
It's a closed session.
Okay. The topics of closed session generally... The topics generally should be in the agenda when you know what they are. So noting that so-and-so rice closed session, it's not public until the employee decides she wants... She doesn't want to have a closed session, she wants to have it in public.
But it's on the agenda.
Yes, I understand. It's public information. I mean, you know, what can I tell you?
So the question is...
It's a tension between open, public, and closed.
Every time you make a mistake as an employee of this district, whether it's Lizette, or it's the D and W, or it's the BA, do they get rice? Do you speak to them?
No.
The BA spoke with Lizette. She said herself, made her aware of the mistake and talked about it and they're gonna rectify it. Why did it have to get to the front where it was only agenda?
Okay. I understand, and because of pending litigation, I can't speak about the answers to you. But that wasn't, what you saw in open public session was not the entirety of the matter. We removed items.
Okay, so you removed something from that?
Yes, we removed things from them because they're pending litigation. We can't discuss them, we have to go into closed. So therefore, we didn't discuss them.
So the notice changed after it was put on the agenda? So you didn't fully talk about the things that you had problems with?
The things that there were issues with.
The issues with, I'm sorry.
I mean, you know, problems, commentates, mistakes, I mean-
Whatever, whatever they are.
Whatever. But, I'm sorry, but, I'm sorry, but I really don't-
I have concerns about who gets rice, what it takes to get rice, and what happens with it.
I'm sorry, but I really don't wanna have a legal discussion here on this.
No, no, you answered my question. You answered my question.
Thank you.
Okay. So in regards to appeal, with the all grass option or partial grass option, are there new sprinkler systems being installed?
Yes.
As part of the million three-
They propose to resprinkler whole period.
So that, I know what that covers now because it was discussed tonight. And it was something that I did attend the meetings. And at the last meeting, there were new proposals put forth that the public, if they're not here for talkers, didn't have. Not happy about that. But again, my personal feeling is that the public really should have some say in this. I still believe it should go to the referendum. I think that we're talking about a million three sixty-five a day, but that doesn't cover everything. And we're sitting here saying, well, it's part of the big plan. Well, what is the big plan? Because just like the big plan has to be addressed in the B-zone district, and you have to look at it as a whole and not piecemeal, works the same way for the park. And I think if you're going to put turf there, and you're gonna spend a million for your taxpayers' money, I think you need to put it out there, and you need to go to the referendum, and you need to hear what the taxpayers have to say. Because I know you think that the majority would like to see that turf shield there. But I think you're wrong. So that's my opinion, and I think you should think about it. I don't think it's what the majority of people want. I come to these meetings and listen to what people have to say. And I think you're incorrect. And so that's my comment on that issue. My other issue is, is that I do hope that people continue to come out. You know, I'm trying to get people to come out and come to these meetings and to make themselves aware of what's going on here. Because what happened here today, I don't even have words for it. But what I am gonna say is that there are people here today that I insisted that they come out and watch how this council is run so that they could see for themselves. Because they don't believe me when I talk about the nonsense that goes on in these meetings. I went to the planning board meeting. It was a pleasure. It was a pleasure. They all have different opinions, but it was a pleasure to be there because they work together. This is not okay. And I hope to educate most of the people in this town to come out, get involved. Because what's happening now just isn't right.
Anybody else? Yes.
Barbara Scrath, six oh three Floyd Street. I think my question's gonna be directed to the attorney. So I'm a little unclear. There's gonna be a vote tonight, is that correct, on the Public Safety Director, on the ordinance? Correct? Okay. Do you believe there is a conflict of interest since this is public safety over police and over fire? And if so, Councilwoman McMaro, who happens not to be here, might have a conflict of interest. There are lawsuits from her husband, public knowledge, and she's involved with the police department, her husband. And I feel that that is a conflict of interest for her to have.
Okay. And it's my opinion that she does not have a conflict of interest in talking about general police matters like the Public Safety Director. She's now prohibited from voting in an open public session on an ordinance that touches upon the police. It also touches upon the emergency medical coordinator, the fire department, and the ambulance thing, and ambulance, and police.
I think you better make that on the piece in the right.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
And we can end.
I'm not gonna come to the microphone because I don't wanna come over everybody. So I'll speak loud and I'm sure everyone will hear me. Mary O'Shea, twelve Irving Avenue. Debbie Tavari talked about how good the planning board meetings were, and I credit that to our chairman, Mr. Perino, and I thank her for a compliment. The only thing is, I would have to say that the residents and the attorneys and the applicants that come to our meetings have a lot better manners than the people that come to these meetings. And I am totally appalled at some of the people here of the way that you carry on and speak. It's very, very disrespectful. You raise your voices, you interrupt, and you elicit responses to that action. You know, like they say, smile when somebody smiles back? If you're nasty, people are gonna be nasty back. I mean, try to have some decorum, okay? And what we're seeing tonight, I think the people that came here, saw the people acting badly, not the council collectively.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chelsin, my shirt's a little, I just wanna add, address this to where I own, and vice versa. You know, if I tell you something, I think you know that you can discuss it if you remember. But I think it's important that in your vote tonight, a doctor, I can't believe it is, gave you a very impassioned speech as to why you shouldn't have somebody overseeing the fire department. And I've no issue with the fire department and how its manager, everybody says they do a fantastic job. But regarding political things, a day that happens once, that your police and your fire department are aligning themselves in a case that's public, and something happens, the delante jealousies or something like that as a result, this is a very, very serious thing. So my understanding is, is that what the Mayor Council's saying for is to have oversight on the political aspect of the fire department, is that right? Is that right that you're, that you're looking for is to have political, for the fire department's political oversight?
No, no, I want-
It's a management position.
A management position.
No, I wish that, in other words, that they're getting political, not in their operations if they're taking political, where the fire department is becoming political? Is that what they would be?
I believe they aren't at times, and it needs to be rectified.
But listen what I'm saying, so if it's even happened once, and you have a police department and a fire department, let's say, publicly aligning themselves in cases and they're out there in the public, you're creating potential delante situation. And I think it should, I think it should be addressed by a public safety director. That alone is reason enough. If it happened once, or if it didn't.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Joseph Lupino, eighty-eight buildings in place.
I can't hear you.
Joseph Lupino, eighty-eight building in place, Englewood Cliffs. My comments are, I think this gentleman echoed it. We are a small community, five thousand people. Our police office, our police force is what, like, twenty-five people? To have, we have a police chief, he has a lot of experience. And now to bring in another Public Safety Director, 'cause I'm sure this person, you know, first of all, I think you should put some type of salary range on the ordinance for transparency, to give the people, you know, some transparency in what this budget, what the range is. But I'm sure this is gonna be a high-paying position overseeing the police department. And I'm concerned with that because just looking at that ordinance, it seems that really the police director or the Public Safety Director is really gonna assume control of all public safety entities, which includes the police and the fire. So that's gonna be a concern for me, because I think that's gonna cause more problems. And I think your, I guess your reason that to bring someone on, I think it's administrative issue, someone did something wrong releasing medical records, I don't think it's cause to hire a police director. I don't know really what your policy procedures are. I mean, I'm sure that's more of a human personnel, right? The first, you know, that medical records, really, I don't know why the police chief has all the medical records. That should probably be in the Personnel Director or Administrative Office, have those. So that could be fixed that way. And, you know, and if you have an issue with the police, whatever the police chief did, or whoever, or the management, there's always a recourse to go to the prosecutors, the chief, law enforcement person, and the county. So you can go there first before, you know, hiring, going out and hiring, you know, a hundred, whatever you're gonna pay this person. Because I'd rather see that money maybe go to hire a patrol officer. Or, you know, even so mentioned also, you know, we need money to maintain our fields. I'd rather see that money go there than to, you know, to cause, I see more problems here with this, with this position. So I would hope that the Mayor Council reconsider this or table this ordinance and give it more thought. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, Senator Darby.
This is Hallie Mann, Deputy Chief of Fire Department. I just wanna clarify some things that I heard here tonight. The ambulance corps wasn't disbanded for political reasons, it was disbanded because of a simple thing, there was no members left. There was three or four left. And I'm a witness to the fact, my uncle suffered a heart attack in my house, and we waited forty-five minutes for an ambulance. He couldn't get up from portly, he couldn't get up from that, out of the night. So they disbanded for a reason. And I said, everyone knows meanings, and there was a few people left that fought their heart. It was a shame, but it was disbanded. So it wasn't disbanded for political reasons. I'd also like to ask, that really, nobody here really knows how the fire department works. The fire department is a true democracy, okay? A very, very true democracy. And every single vote on anything that comes up politically, Mike Chappie's the president, steps aside and lets somebody else run the meeting, okay? And I think that every single meeting I have is a meeting in probably twenty-five years. Steps aside and lets somebody else run the meeting. Steps aside, doesn't get involved, okay? Your ordinance reads that this person respond to any police and or fire emergency or community disaster, it may assume command of the same, okay? I'll be damned if I'm going out three or four nights a week in the middle of the night, and then there's a big emergency, and he says, you're out. You go, you go oversight, I'll take command of this court. And I'm not gonna do it. And leave all my guys. They're all gonna leave. And this is gonna cost to borrow probably three million dollars, four million dollars to hire enough people to run it. Because we have our thirty-five guys, and that's how we pool it, and that's how it works. It works. A hundred, since eighteen ninety-seven, a hundred and twenty years old, a hundred and thirteen, whoever it is, okay? It works. It's a true democracy. And if you think that we all stood here in full agreement with what's happening, but the majority ruled, and we all came here, there's probably twenty-five of us here, that's most of the department, and they all stood behind the will of the majority, okay? Now, I urge somebody up there to make a motion, let it get defeated, I don't care. But let somebody make a motion tonight to exclude the fire department from this ordinance. Let it go down, I don't care. But vote on it. Let us be independent like we have a hundred and twenty years. I'll be damned, they're gonna discipline my members? Someone's gonna come in, a stranger, and this is what we discipline our own? We haven't had a problem, any kind of problem, in over a hundred years, all right? We have a long history, a clean history, okay? And it's terrible. In nineteen ninety-one, George Jimon was chief the first time. I was the new elected captain in January, and I went into a three-three-three silo room, we thought somebody might have been inside. And I went behind Mike Chappie, I said goodbye to my family that day. I couldn't even see him, I was holding on to his back, going up to the second floor to rescue somebody, okay? In October this year, we had the St. Michael's Boulevard. I got there first. I was in total, total, like, unbelievable what was going on there, okay? The police department, the fire department, the ambulance from Englewood worked like a well-oiled machine. Not one person, not one person had an injury that I know of. Maybe it was a scratch. It was amazing. And I really urge somebody on this day to make a motion, I don't care if it's defeated, let it get defeated, but make a motion to exclude us from this ordinance.
Anybody else? Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, four Willow Drive. First, I'd like to address the ambulance corps. I was at the meeting at which the ambulance corps was dissolved. One fact has been left out of all the discussion. The ambulance corps members who were there had told everyone, they had recruited a number of people. They had sent the applications over to the police department to be processed, and the police department never processed those applications. And that should be on the case, because they were quite clear about that. Second of all, you know, I am disturbed about all of these people saying, everything's been wonderful, everything's been hunky-dory. No, people have maintained the impression by keeping information in front of the public. Many of the lawsuits involving the town until recently never made the newspapers. Starting with one going back to the nineteen nineties, where a plaintiff named Sean Hollerman, Sainte-Burro, was paid in nineteen nineties forty-five thousand dollars, a lot of money back then, because he allegedly was strip-searched on the side of the road by members of our police department. Since then, we have Mr. Chelsin's lawsuit, we've had BBCon, which was kept quiet. That one alleged that the police department ignored allegations of sexual abuse of a minor because the alleged perpetrator was a donor to the PBA. We've had allegations in lawsuits that there was a fight at Mother Mexico involving police personnel armed, carrying guns. That was never dealt with. We've had a whole pile of lawsuits, all of which you can find by our New Jersey courts online or Pesa. And I would encourage everyone to get them and read them. They're very disturbing. I was very disturbed to hear that confidential medical records and information have made it into discovery, and there doesn't seem to be any dispute about that. Mr. Galantucci seems to have acknowledged it. I find it particularly curious that Chief Chappie doesn't seem to have a cop problem with this, because a couple of years ago at a council meeting, I read a personnel record inserting a member of his family, which I had obtained in the civil case term of the Bergen-Captain's furious report. It was attached to a pleading with Shalit case. He was furious, angry, and making a lot of accusations about, you know, how I had gotten this, and this shouldn't have been in the public. He had no, he had a big problem with a member of his family's personnel record, and I did not disclose the name or any of the identifying information. I had reacted because that doesn't, it was related to ambulance courts. But that he had a problem with, but he doesn't have a problem with taking somebody's medical records? Aren't there federal laws that prevent the disclosure of medical records? Finally, we've had some discussion about people needing to recuse. I believe that the person who should be recusing tonight is Councilwoman Ellen Clark, who was endorsed by the PBA in the last election. I don't know how she can possibly be unbiased by the circumstances.
First, I'm new to this.
You didn't know you were endorsed? You didn't know you were endorsed?
No.
No. Really?
Yeah, yes. We really need to get to the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, we do have a meeting to get to. So, yes, ma'am.
Everybody's spoken, right?
No.
I came tonight to listen.
I'm sorry.
And I would say that I don't see how any member of the council with conscience can vote for this new position with the fire department's position as it's been stated. The fire department is fantastic.
I agree.
And I just-
We agree.
And, right, and they have said that they will not continue to work under this new arrangement. I don't see how you can consider that at all.
I don't think that was intended as a threat. I think that was just something-
Not a threat, it's a statement of facts. He said, that is one's words.
I have feelings.
And I think you have to consider this very seriously.
Of course we do. I told, I told Mr. Sardines-
I think I have to vote.
Right, I told Mr. Sardines that I would go through his questions, and I think we could resolve it, by frankly, tonight.
Well, I'm gonna listen to hear how you vote. I'm sitting here.
Don't, don't, stay right there.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to not include the fire department in this.
Is it gonna move up? You can move up, because that's how many chairs right here.
I should add that motion, Carol.
All right, let her finish. Yeah, let her finish.
I wanna make a motion, Mayor, to amend the ordinance, that two thousand seventeen dash ten, to take out the fire department from just Public Safety.
Okay, hold on, I need to look at the ordinance. That's fine. There was a second?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Just for council members, so you're not supposed to make substantial changes between first reading and second reading. That generally is a directive that applies when you're adding stuff. It just, doesn't necessarily apply when you're taking stuff down. So let me just specifically look exactly at the section. Okay, in-
I can table it, then.
In chapter two-three-one, section two-thirty-one point one, paragraph D, we can remove the volunteer, the motion should be, remove the volunteer fire department from the definition of public safety entities. So when we get to that ordinance, we will do that motion before we go to the-
Do we remove the police too, public? Because I'm gonna make that motion after we vote on this. I'm not kidding, I'm dead serious.
Well, I'm, I'm-
No, that's-
I'm dead serious that we need it, okay? You may not think so, but you're-
At your opinion, that's what we're here for.
Fine, you can vote, no, then.
Okay, so I amend my-
But if we can remove that emery, then we can remove the police department.
You can make a motion, whatever you want. All right, whatever you want.
If you're clear.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Do I have to make my phone?
No, no, we'll do it later.
I have to do it at the ordinance.
Okay. You've gone several times, she has not gone at all, this'll be our last one.
No, she went.
Oh, wait, you, you already went, all right. So kind of motion to close at this point?
Only caucus only, only caucus.
Oh, she was only caucus? All right. Come on up.
Okay.
I just see your hand, sorry.
Yes, please. Simple, simple.
May McRus.
Karen Guyer, two seventy out. The item on Suez water, I assume that you're giving money to the revenue and you're also modifying the standards, or is that new revenue? Would you be able to send it to the local?
Have the borough administrators?
That is an agreement that was negotiated with Suez in order to restore the streets curb-to-curb, so we need to bring in the receivable funds, and we will be expending it.
Okay, so it's a net flow.
Yes.
Okay, rice notices, simple. I just wanna understand procedurally how rice notices work. I just want to understand procedurally how rice notices work. In my experience, if an administrator has a problem with an employee, that administrator's job, especially if it's someone who works at our administrator, is to bring that employee into his or her office and to discuss with that employee the problems that they are having. The matter gets discussed. Sometimes a notation is made on the personnel record, sometimes it isn't. But usually it ends there. In the case of what we saw in caucus, I believe Mrs. Sinele said that she had spoken with Ms. Duffy about what the perceived problems was, were, and they had worked out a remediation plan. What I don't understand is why this matter is elevated to the full mayor and council for discussion. If this was a personnel matter where a person made a mistake or didn't follow procedure or didn't understand a procedure, that's the job of that, that person superior to address. And I want to know why that person received a rice notice and why that person was publicly...
It's very simple. The borough administrator sees one set of facts. She's not involved in the litigations the way the mayor and council are. So we've both spoken, so the clerk, it's simple.
I, I don't think so. I think there was something else going on. But nevertheless, I want to just, it's my floor.
You can feel however you want.
I wanted to just understand procedurally if Mark has a problem with his employees, you deal with it, right? Is that appropriate? You talk to the employee, you bring them in, you speak to them. If Catherine has a problem, she does the same.
Okay.
I guess that didn't happen here in this...
No, it was just explained, whether or not you choose to listen to it, that's the simple explanation.
Very careful.
Right, and then you mischaracterize.
Now, on the B3 zone, back to the B3 zone. I gave a ordinance in caucus and I want to call each of the board members for those who wish to respond.
You don't get to do that.
I get to ask, they can respond if they want to or not.
You don't get to do that.
I would like to know if each member of this council, I'll address it to each of you, will respect the 35-foot height zoning that is currently in place. Can I ask, Ed?
I can, I will.
Ellen?
Yes.
Gloria?
You did it in the past, that you approved 153 feet. What the hell? No, excuse me. You were building skyscrapers two years ago.
Excuse me, excuse me. I have the floor and I have the history on this one.
All right.
Excuse me, but I need to counsel the council members, okay? If you don't like it, then please sit down and we'll call you up.
Councilman Mayor first.
Okay. No, here, here, I just want you to... I would just want you to understand...
Gloria, you agree to that too, right?
That a zoning ordinance, if it comes to you, at some point, a zoning ordinance or a rehab plan is gonna come to you. And the purpose of that is supposed to be to present a cohesive look in a geographical area, right?
I've stated my, I've made my statement in the past.
I, I understand. I'm just cautioning that you don't even have an ordinance, you don't even have an ordinance in front of you.
Doesn't matter, I guess, my opinion. Doesn't matter.
Our zoning says 35 feet. Are you willing to change that for any particular zone? It's very simple, it's a simple question. Bill? Yes or no?
No, they're already changed up.
We have an ordinance that says 35.
Miss Gygge just wants to do it in a few seconds anyway.
Can we, Bill? No comment, Mr. Barr?
She's ready to show me.
We would support what, I'm sorry, sir. We would support changing the 35 feet, is the bar up?
I don't have any comment there.
We don't have any comment. Okay, and just for the record...
And that doesn't mean one way or the other.
I understand, no opinion, nothing, okay.
Well, you recently agreed to 69 feet, right? 70 feet?
Fine, let's...
You recently agreed to 70 feet.
I agreed to 65 feet as part of the settlement to bring LG into this town. That was a good thing. And for the record, Mr. Aversa was the councilman who enabled us to restore 35 feet throughout the town.
Yeah, well, he also had you going up to 153 feet, so did Gloria.
Excuse me, this, you know, you talk about respect, Mr. Cranja. And I work...
Actually, I don't.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I'm up with Gloria.
No, you don't.
You talk about respect, and I'm telling you, you don't have it correct. I'm sad...
You have the floor because I let you have the floor, but now you're attacking people.
I'm not attacking you, I'm talking about this green.
Now it's time to sit down.
And I'm gonna go there, excuse me, can I continue to speak? Does anybody allow me to speak?
It's time to sit down.
No, it's not time to sit down. I have a statement to make, and you're wrong about what you're doing.
All right, make your statement.
In LG, something that I know more about than most people here, we sat and we negotiated this, I'm sorry, Mr. Lyle, I'm sorry you're so tired. But in the LG instance, the mayor who sat here was willing to listen to the public, listen to the conservation...
He had it going to 153 feet also. In his darkness of night.
And bring down the zoning to 35 feet, which enabled the LG compromise to take place. So please don't try and restate this. Now, my question is about...
I thought you were done.
No, I'm gonna talk about...
You're running out of time because we have to get to the ordinance.
Then I'll bring it up when you get to the ordinance because the puzzle can speak on the ordinance.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thanks, I think everybody has spoken now, so let's have a motion. You already spoke, so let's have a motion. He has not spoken, he has not spoken. I know, it's getting dragged down there.
On the ordinance...
No, no, you, no, I decide who goes. You want to speak, you come and speak. But you already spoke, you already spoke. Well, he's gonna speak. He hasn't spoken yet.
It doesn't go in.
What? Can everybody just put all their questions together once? Do it this way, you know?
Good evening, Steve Duffey, 503 Ford Street. I, I just want to comment, I'm gonna pivot back to the ball field and the issue with what's up for debate in regards to turf or grass and what's better moving forward. I come from an era where two of my boys grew up on those fields as currently constructed. There was a lot of effort put in from the fathers at that time to make sure that we had safe fields for our teams and for our visiting teams that came and played on those fields. And if records mean anything, we did pretty darn well playing on those fields. If you look back at the kids that participated, those fields were not a major issue in the quality of life. In fact, I think the quality of life is probably better off with those fields being under grass 100%. We don't need lights in this town at that ball field. We've existed for a long time without lights. And I'm sure there's, you know, 50/50 split in town whether we need lights or not. So I hope that, I hope that, and I've worked with Andy, I sat on the board adjustment for some years. And I know the parks are very valuable asset to this town. We don't have many of them. And so I just ask everyone up here, including our engineer, who I know is very capable, please, big picture, look at the finances, the quality of life that that field brings and has brought to many, many people in this town. And we'll continue to do so moving forward. So whatever the town decides, please understand it's a big expense. And we really do have a nice ball field right now. It made a little, it may need some tweaking here and there. But please consider leaving it the way it is and doing what you can to keep that field grass. Baseball and soccer and softball need to be played on grass. That's the joy of the game. And please keep our park on grass because I think it's gonna benefit our town for many, many more years and much more people will be affected by it in a positive way. I was gonna comment on my second issue, but both of my boys are current level-one firefighters and are Englewood Cliff's volunteer fire department. It's been of great value to them to be a part of the, to be a part of the fire department. My feeling is that if something isn't broke, don't go ahead and fix it. I think our fire department, again, it's value-added to the citizens of this town. They do a great service to every resident in this town. And it would be a shame if they came under the umbrella of an outsider who was going to get involved with the operation or the management. I understand what the mayor is saying, but boy, if it's not fixed, don't go out of your way to try to fix it. It's working well. We all appreciate and value the fire department as we do the police and emergency services. So I'm just gonna simply ask everyone, please consider letting the fire department keep on keeping on and keeping us safe. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Nancy Cranja, who's 70th District in court. And I just want to say about the field, and we've done a wonderful job of explaining ourselves over and over again and thanking you for all your work and contributions. Now, our children, I have three children, they've all played all the sports in town for many, many years. I've lived here for 24 years. I tell you that I don't drive, I'm legally blind. I walk to that field every day. I've walked with my babies in carriages. I've walked to bring them to their athletic ability, to their athletic events over there. I walk my dog there every single day. The reason why you're not seeing anyone on that field is because it's been a very rainy August and that field is flooded. I can't go around the perimeter of the field because there are areas where it's so flooded I couldn't step with my dog. And it's not even just me, it's most of us that are walking our dogs. You can't even go around the field, there are two areas that flood terribly. Yesterday and the day before, our daughter wanted to go run. She couldn't run. She couldn't play soccer on our field because it was still, two days after it rained, it was still saturated. There were so many divots. She ended up going to Tuna Fly. She's been going to Tuna Fly every single day to run. That's a shame. It's a shame that we can't use our field. All of you that have come up, I've never, I don't see you guys walking around the field. We, we walk around the field all the time. Do you not see the condition that it's in? Eddie, you know the condition that field is in.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And this doesn't even resolve what you're talking about, Nancy.
Yeah, neither does the grass. I love this field, I love nature. I'd love to see the grass grow. I really would, because, you know, quite honestly, I go there every day, so I enjoy that. However, it's been flooded. It's been flooded for so long, and the passageways has been flooded for so long. And also, from a safety standpoint, we don't have enough lights. It's not fair for someone like me, who can't see in darkness, to actually not be able to walk anywhere. Don't disabled people have any rights anymore? You should have some light somewhere so that I can walk around the field and feel safe. Lights shouldn't go out at 4:30 when it gets dark and we're stranded out there. It's not right. And all of you, I've been sitting here quietly for a very long time. I've noticed all of you and the way you react. I'm not gonna recommend you, you all know who you are and how you behave. You know, what I can tell you is that we are a profit from my husband being up here. We sacrifice as a family. We're doing it as service to the community. I'm appalled that people do address my husband in the way that you would address, that you would address him. I wish that you have some respect, okay? This is a gentleman that's taking out his time. Obviously, time is money with lawyers. They do make money on hourly wages, right? This is a person who's volunteering, just like the father department is volunteering. These are people who give up all their time. Phil is very, very involved in his own business and family, and so is everybody else. Mark, Carol, everyone up there, I thank you for your service. Gloria, Ellen, Ed, whenever I see you, we're always very cordial to each other because I respect all of you for your services. That's fantastic what you're doing up there. I can't believe that as a community, we attack our service people. The fire department, you're absolutely terrific. And I thank you for all your services. Anyone who's serving, Karen Geiger, God bless you for looking out for everybody for our heightened jurisdiction. But let's just all be civil, let's all work together towards something. The fact that we all come up here, where you get onto your corners out here...
Emily, she doesn't give proper dress to the audience.
I don't think that we're working towards anything right now.
What, she's...
I just don't know, are you, are you in agreement, Eddie?
You know what, Mrs. Cranja, I, I really appreciate your comments, but you don't get to address the audience.
Everybody else does.
No, you don't.
The audience has addressed...
You get to ask God's questions, but not...
I did.
I guess you haven't heard a word, Gloria. Gloria hasn't heard a word you said. Anyway.
I haven't heard a word I said, Gloria.
No, I didn't listen, I'm very respectful to you too. But if anyone else came up and they started to address the audience, they would have stopped them. So you are not getting any special treatment. I'm sorry, Mrs. Cranja. You're not getting a special treatment here, okay? Thank you, thank you very much.
Other people have addressed the audience. I've heard a comment from Maria the Larry. Maria? So, anyway. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's our, it's our 25th anniversary in August, by the way. Community night out. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor? Counsel, I believe when you first brought up that you were gonna make this B3, B2 zoning special rule, whatever, that we were gonna respect the height. If I'm mistaken, please tell me, but I remember you, Mr. Mayor, Carol, Counsel, that you said you would respect the 35 feet.
Height was never discussed.
Oh, yes, it was, Mr. Mayor. I remember, I remember very clearly what I asked. Is it gonna be on the three stories? The two stories that you folks said, I respect the height, I'm not gonna be...
It comes as a story, yeah.
I'm not gonna go up. Go ahead.
You may have missed earlier. I think what happens is, is once if the council decides to declare an area of rehabilitation, then your questions are very valid. They'll get put to the planning board when they're evaluated and replanned, which will eventually be presented back to the mayor and council to adopt that ordinance. So I think you have a great question. I think the idea of the height has, I've heard that, you know, that people are worried about the height. I would just hold, I'm not telling you I know... I would just bring that question about height to the thing.
And I respect you, and I respect Dr. Perino and everybody else. But I remember the council, Dr. Perino, in U.C. I remember you saying you didn't want it to look like Fort Lee.
That's true.
100%. And you would respect our height. And my fear is, my fear is, once we go into a certain mode, then I can get thrown out. We can get four stories or whatever. I just, Mr. Mayor, that's my only fear.
Remember what I said.
I think the man said, and I agree with you folks, something has to be done with that. The man should be entitled to fix his property. I have no problem with that. I don't think anybody should have a problem with that. But it should be done in the way Englewood Cliff is, the 35 feet, like we said. And keep it, and keep it in some sort of assembly like that. And one more thing, if we're gonna have everything going to the board and whatnot, and I understand...
That's, and that's just, that's the process to state, sir.
No, 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 I have no problem with that. And I understand that everything gets posted in the newspaper and everything gets posted... And I understand that everything gets posted in the newspaper, and everything gets posted on Englewood Cliffs. But a lot of people in town don't read those things, and a lot of people in town don't go on the computer. If they would notice that something this important, they get the community involved. I think it's very important. And it should be some mechanism for the community to come out, not just notice through newspapers or notice through, but the community should be involved here so we don't get this argument, right, left, left, right. That's nonsense.
Well, the only thing I can say is I'm sure the board will be following all of the notice requirements required by the law.
Counselor, I'm with you 100%.
Okay.
All right? And just like you're saying.
Word of mouth.
Not only that, but you know how you respond to summons and information and belief?
Yeah.
Let's throw that out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's, let's just get people and let people know that Dr. Perrino is having a meeting like that.
All right.
So Dr. Perrino doesn't get three people in the meeting.
Well, I think, I think that he had a lot of people there because it went for four hours the other night, so I don't think we have any problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but no extra notice, just what's required by the law. Would you like a number?
Debbie Fair, 49, early next year. I also came out tonight to speak about the B3 zone, and I have a real concern with even classifying it as rehabilitation zone. Can you go closer to the height? Oh, I'm sorry. I have a problem with classifying it as a rehabilitation zone. I don't think that that's necessary. This is not a depressed area. It's mainly a property maintenance issue. And declaring it a rehabilitation zone opens the door for many things that people might not be aware of, and it could be a very slippery slope with violating our height ordinance and perhaps putting in parking buildings, which is going to put a burden on our school system. It's, it's just not in the way that Englewood Cliffs is. This is a beautiful community. It's the jewel of the twist. There is no area of Englewood Cliffs that should be declared rehabilitation zone. And I don't believe that it is the criteria to be established as a rehabilitation zone. And the banner, I understand, is from Mazer, our engineers from Mazer, hello, Andy, Steve. But how can our engineer give an independent opinion of the plan report when it's the same company? And part of being a rehabilitation zone means the sewer system is malfunctioning, what it needs repair. That's not the case in that zone. So I don't see why we can't approach the area. No one's saying that it doesn't need assistance. But the assistance, it should start with the property owners maintaining their properties properly, like everyone else has to do in town. And then if the town wants to make improvements to the road, the infrastructure, fine. But to go rehabilitation zone, and let's say you apply for a grant, and it's all to help one property owner, then you apply for these grants to grant services, they don't pay for everything. A lot of grants are matching grants. A lot of grants don't include professional services, like the engineers. And the town is going to be taxed for this improvement. And it's an improvement that's benefiting one property owner. And I think that that's a burden to put on the rest of the taxpayer.
Eddie, how many property owners are down there? Seventeen?
But the other properties are not in need of rehabilitation. The other properties are very well maintained.
All of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. There's no problem with any.
Is there a review at the caucus meeting?
No, I was.
Okay, he gave a very detailed explanation about why the word rehabilitation needs to use.
Why?
Andy, do you want to give that explanation again? Because of how, how it was inherited.
Yeah, it's about around 30.
But they are not in need of repair.
Right. It's a long discussion.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's not one of the criteria.
Yeah, I did so. The idea behind, the state's idea behind an area needed rehabilitation started because years ago, areas near redevelopment all failed. Our areas got challenged in court, and they all failed, and towns could not institute zoning in areas to actually start getting areas redeveloped to get their taxes ready to survive. So what happened was they created this process. It's kind of a very simple process. The criteria needed is actually very simple. The idea of a zone, of this B3 zone, if you look around, there's restaurants, there's retail, there's office, there's residential, there's properties that are closed up, there's a salon. The uses are all of the board. So if you were to do a rezoning like the last three planners before us looked at, it would have to blanket zone, it doesn't fit. So the whole purpose to set up this process was so you could take a zone like this, create a plan for the zone that could be done, coffee specific, one side of street specific, other side of street specific. It can allow you to introduce street skating requirements, it can allow you to have a meeting down the center, new lighting requirements, it allows you to build in a lot more than zoning warrants can do. Then the plan will be presented on the planning board to the mayor and council, and they would adopt it as a zoning event, so it'd be all the properties included in this project.
I don't think it just meets the criteria.
So, so, I'll do this right. It's, they made it quite simply, Steve. I've done it in the most honest tries where the criteria is very simple. Is there more than 50 years old? Yes, yes.
Yes, but it's not malfunctioning.
But that's not the criteria. The criteria is the zone.
It says and. There was a court case on me. There was a court case. It was and, not or. I'm listening. I know you for years, but I'm listening.
I've been through court on this. So as long as.
Yes, it was your Twitter that or you, that it had to be and. Go ahead.
As long as I'm willing to say, which I am, I have a license, okay? I have my license. They said the word is 50 years older, residential, and it's in need of repair, and it is in need of repair, just not at any.
You're reading that as something.
But I can, because the pipes were not made until last year.
Have you checked?
You're not required.
Anything to verify?
You're not required.
That's just your.
You're allowed to do that if you have a license, and you're allowed to do it. I've done it ten times already in my career.
That just sounds too convenient.
That's what the state made it. The state's under the process.
For the town to be able to do something in the area that the residents will not approve of.
Thank you.
And it'll be a done deal, and it'll be too late for everybody to have a voice and say what they want.
But it's not a done deal, so if they introduce a resolution, just introduce it, not pass it, to declare an area rehab, goes to the planning board for review. The planning board will review it again and say, we agree, maybe, and then if they send it back to the council, they'll pass that resolution. All it does is declare an area rehab, it allows the mayor and council to ask the planning board to start now working on a new zoning port, just like the last three planners back in 2003 said it.
It's not the same.
Oh, it is the same.
This fair, you'll have multiple opportunities to continue this discussion, but we need to move on to the.
Well, I would like to reiterate, if you're determined to go through with this, I don't think it's necessary to label it a rehabilitation zone, but if you're determined, I would also like every one of you to make a commitment that the height will not be increased. You, you know what? This is a beautiful town.
I agree.
Because we have a 35 height limit.
And I don't think you've heard anyone disagree with you. Do you agree that we need to fix this zone?
LG is a beautiful, state-of-the-art building, which, by the way, when that variance was approved for the height, it was Mrs. McMorro's appointee on the Board of Adjustments.
Of course, I should blame for everything. I should blame for breath, for breathing. There's never the man. She knows who's been there, please.
So you keep saying that the old administration did this, whatever. It's actually not true, and you should get your facts straight as to who proved that height variance initially for the LG building.
Okay, fine. Do you have a motion to close the public portion?
Anyway, we'd like to have to commit to the H35.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion to close?
I don't think it's asking too much.
Second?
If you care about the town, that's what you'll do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll close. All right, let's move down to the resolutions. Madam Burke, would you read each one?
We need a break. No, we don't need a break. Let's keep going.
We're about halfway through this.
Before I call for the vote, do you want to give an opinion as far as the tax appeal resolutions and for Councilwoman?
I already talked.
Oh, you did? You know?
Yeah, I think as long as we get there, let's go.
Okay.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Ellen has had a question about whether she can vote, if she can. All right, let's go to 150.
Resolution 150, solicit bids for disposal of leaves. I need a motion?
Move.
Second. I'm sorry, who was that?
Ellen, second.
Councilperson Taversa? E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. Resolution 151, 159, resolution approval of Suez revenue. I need a motion?
Move.
Second. Councilperson Taversa? E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 152, approval of county tax court judgment for Sylvan Corp. Center LLC 910-920 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Yes, I can vote on that one. Thanks, Ellen, we appreciate you watching.
Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Just to be clear, I just want to say that for the borough's attorney's advice, I was advised that I am able to vote on these matters, even though, I was advised that I can, so I will. So, yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. Resolution 153, approval of county tax court judgment for Fallestrone Management LLC 600 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
refuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 154, approval of county court tax judgment for Yay J Realty LLC 464 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
refuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 155, approval of county tax court judgment for 385 Sylvan Avenue LLC, 385 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved.
Councilperson Taversa?
refuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 156, approval of county tax court judgment for Commercial Plaza Incorporated, 375 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
refuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 157, approval of county tax court judgment for 300 Sylvan Avenue LLC, 300 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 158, approval of county tax court judgment for SYL Associates LLC 44 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
refuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 159, approval of D&amp;L paving to pave Suez Water Main Roads through the Riverside Cooperative. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
refuse.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 160, hire part-time DPW employee Damian Casares. I need a motion?
So moved.
Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. 162, authorize mayor to sign the release of maintenance bond for 21 Sylvan Avenue. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
When did we get this resolution?
Probably about 5:00. There's a miscommunication.
How is it a miscommunication?
That's all it is. It's just a miscommunication.
Okay, yes.
I thought, I thought someone else was doing it, and they thought I was doing it, so I didn't get it till, I didn't get to it till 5:00 today at Borough Hall. I'm very sorry. But yeah, it's a pretty standard resolution.
Yes. Thank you. Councilwoman O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. That completes all the resolutions. Mayor, they passed.
Thank you, everybody. Let's have the ordinance, public hearing, 17-08. Madam Park, would you please read that into the record?
Ordinance 17-08, establishing applicant fees for special meetings of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Planning Board. I need a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
In favor?[1583.03]
Aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just on that ordinance, nothing else is acceptable now. 17-08. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay, I don't see anyone. Do we have a motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adopt, please. Need a motion?
So moved.
Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa. Ordinance 1709, an ordinance fixing salaries, wages, and compensation for all salary-appointed and elected officers within the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. I need a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open to the public, Mayor.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on ordinance 17-09, 17-09 only, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Anybody else? Have a motion to close public discussion on 17-09?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I need to amend my motion that I made earlier on advice of council. I'll be amending ordinance 17, uh, 2017-10, the creation of position for public safety director to delete the volunteer fire department from section 2-3, 1.1 parentheses D, and any other provision related to the volunteer fire department within that ordinance.
Is there a second?
And I believe, uh, council?
Is there a second?
Yes.
Councilwoman Roy. I'd have a vote on that amendment.
Okay, one second.
So moved.
No, it was, it was already, I just got it.
We're gonna have a vote on the amendment, then we're gonna open up to the public.
This is just an amendment, right?
Okay.
Because Ed, you said you're gonna make another amendment, are you? Okay, then you have.
You gotta vote on this.
You have to vote on amendments separately, and then you have to vote on the ordinance as amended.
I have to vote.
Okay?
Okay.
Yes, okay. So this is a vote on amendment to remove the volunteer fire department.
From the ordinance.
Okay. Fire department, okay. Councilperson Taversa?
So just removing them, not doing anything else?
We're removing all ref, not references, all sections that relate to the fire department.
So after we take vote, can we make another amendment?
Yes, we can.
We're not, yeah, after this vote, I guess, you could make another amendment.
But we're not voting on the public safety director at this point.
No.
I just want to be clear.
Vote to amend, remove the fire department from the definition of public entity.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Ordinance 17-10 has been amended.
Okay, Ed, you had another amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that ordinance to remove the police department.
And second that motion.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
So if he, we've already removed the fire department, so we're looking to remove the police department, but we don't have an ordinance.
There's emergencies.
I want to be clear to understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little gamey, but you know, it's just sort of.
Yes. Yes, yes.
We're going to.
He's made a motion.
It was seconded.
Exactly.
And, um, no. One more question while I'm at it. For borough council. So I just want to be clear too, because that's come up obviously by council people and as I have brought up many times, Councilwoman McMorro does not need to recuse herself, I'd like to know why.
I don't think she has to recuse herself on general police matters.
This is not general police matters. This is running the police department. This is not a general police matter. And I will, so we know there are, I've been informed, and I know people know, and if I'm wrong, correct me now.
Go ahead.
That councilwoman has brought some investigation, uh, investigation inquiries to our police department, some members, so if that's the case, I want to make sure.
How are you aware of that? How are you aware of that?
You know, you really, you keep digging those holes, Ed.
How are you aware?
Ed, stop. You're, you're, let's vote on this. Let's vote on this. We're gonna deal with that later. Apparently you have very good sources in the police department, which is exactly why we need a public safety director. Let's have the vote, okay? Is that not true? Thank you, you're making my case for me, okay? Thank you. Let's have a vote. All right. Is that not true? Let's have a vote on the amendment.
I do not believe that she has a conflict on every.
Well, I want that in writing. I really do. More importantly, we got that on video, okay?
She does not.
I want it from our borough council. All right, let's have a vote on this. On the amendment. She doesn't have a conflict.
In the subject matter that we are here to vote on tonight, creation of the position of public safety director, Carol McMorro does not have a conflict.
All right.
She's an elected official, she's allowed to vote on this.
Madam Park, please.
This is a general matter.
This is a specific matter. Thank you, Ed.
Taversa made the motion, who seconded?
Park.
E. Park.
E. Park.
I can second it.
I second it.
Thank you. Councilperson Taversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
No.
M. Park?
No.
Whoa.
No.
Second amendment to ordinance 17, Mayor does not pass.
I have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you just presuming?
Yes, I am.
No.
I'd like to make an amendment, Mayor.
There's nothing left.
There's nothing left.
There's something left. There's something left.
What would you like to amend?
I'd like to amend the resolution that no relative, the ordinance, no relative of sitting mayor or council would be appointed as public safety director.
Okay, we can't accept that amendment to this ordinance.
That's not gonna happen anyway, so just, come on. But don't we already have an anti-nepotism?
Yeah, I, I never.
Well, apparently not. Look at what we're dealing with here, come on.
I'm sorry. I never.
Let's have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Now wait, wait a minute.
Wait.
We need to state the ordinance properly, okay?
Okay.
That amendment, that proposed amendment can't be an amendment to this ordinance on second reading. I'm sorry.
I'd like to know why.
It's a separate matter.
Because it's adding a substantive provision. There is not a provision.
You're amending, you're amending to delete.
Look, the borough, the borough has its nepotism rules as it is, and we will adhere to those. So you could allay your fears that Carol McMorro's husband is not going to become the public safety director, okay? Sleep well, that's not gonna happen, all right? Is that what you're really worried about? Come on, just say it.
Yeah, I'm just, for the record, I'm really putting this on the record as a form of harassment.
That's all right, let's, let's go. All right.
All right. May, uh, ordinance?
Absolutely is.
Okay. Ordinance 17-10. I'm sorry, is that where I am? Oh, yeah. Ordinance 17-10, an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Inglewood Cliffs to add new provisions to create the position of public safety director. I need a motion to.
What, what, as amended?
As amended to remove the fire department.
From the definition of public safety.
Okay.
And public safety entity. Thank you.
I need a motion?
Well, you said fire department. Fire department.
Yes.
This is the ordinance.
This is to open to the public. I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
McMorro, second, whoa. All in favor?
Aye.
Open to the public, Mayor?
If there's anyone from the public who still wishes to be heard on this matter, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. And if you've already been up here talking about it, just, there's nothing else left to say, but come on up and do it briefly.
Natalie Ashwell, Cypress Street. Are there any neighboring towns in Bergen County that currently have a safety officer?
Ed Royer has a public safety director, and I'm considering it right now.
And the one, how long have they had a public safety director?
Has Palce Park has one as well? I don't know. I don't know.
And has, have their litigations gone down? Is that, like, is that the reason for having this public safety?
There's a lot of reasons why we need one, and that's, that's one of the reasons.
Okay, and have, in the other towns, do you know if their litigation has gone down?
I don't know if they had a litigation problem, they may have other problems.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So that side of the room has a lot of questions. Yes, this is Sabari.
Justice Sabari, Lawrence, Calhoun Avenue. Thank you. I want to thank you all for removing the fire department. It's very nice to say. Still not qualified for public safety director. But what I'm trying to understand is that we just removed a substantial proportion of this ordinance. And I'm just wondering, who, who created the language in this ordinance? Is this something that you as a council work on to decide what the responsibility of the public safety director is going to be? And if so, do you have professional help coming up with the description of the job responsibility of the public safety director? I mean, we just made a big change, we just took the fire department off. So some thought had to go into all of this.
Yeah.
I'm glad they're off. I think the whole ordinance should be off. But I'm just wondering what involvement as a group, as a whole, this council has in deciding something as serious as a job responsibility as broad as what's listed here. Also, this job, supposedly we're doing this now because of all the lawsuits and the way they're being handled. Has everybody read the lawsuits? Does everybody feel that there's a need? Have you all read all of these lawsuits that are creating this position to be dealt with? And you have privy to that. I would imagine the council, you all have privy to that. So I think in coming up with this language, I'd just like to know, who in the council decides what their responsibilities are and just change them on a whim this evening?
It's Ottawa. It's Ottawa. It's after eighteen months of contemplation that we're doing this.
So. No, that's true. And you had the fire department in there.
Yes, so let me, let me try.
Which rightfully should, the police department should be taken out also. I just want to know, as a council, how does that work? Do you get together, do you decide what these are, do you hire professionals to decide what the professionals, what responsibilities are? Like, how did you come up with this?
So you asked the question a few times.
Yes.
There was a police committee, and they met with different people.
Can you, can you, stop recording. Thank you.
They met, they met with people, you've heard tonight that they met with people. I was given materials, I researched other ordinances, I came up with and included materials that were given to me. I think I had some from William and a couple of other, uh, uh, input. And I really don't know which councilpersons gave that to me. And then I did my usual research of ordinances across a varied part of the state. I go through the league site, the league of municipalities site, I look at what they have on, I look at similar towns.
So you.
And I tracked an ordinance. I'm sorry?
So.
Yeah, and Mary's.
It's based on what everybody else is?
Well, it is and it isn't, because it becomes a whole new document by the time a good attorney's stricken there is done. Whatever comments or changes, I did not receive any. We had a debate about the fire department before tonight, believe me, in whether or not there should be, what should cover. And the, the public safety entity definition, when I was drafting it, was something that I was concerned about. What, what, which entities do we legally have? And there was, in my mind, a difference because you're volunteers, you're not a paid fire department. What you often see when there is a public safety director versus a police director is where there is either a paid or part-paid fire department. And this is not.
So this really is a police director.
So, well, right now, I'm, I'm going to be taking a look at the ordinance after the deletion of the fire department references to take a look at how it stands as it is. And I will advise the council if I feel that it needs to be revised or rescinded and replaced with something new, whatever. We'll get to that thing.
Okay.
But, and then the other thing I just want to tell you is, you had another question, and now it just went out of my head.
I'm sorry, I do have another question. You answered my question.
Okay.
You, you drafted.
Yeah, I drafted with input, and I didn't receive any request, and they had a first reading, so of course. All right.
So my, my other question is, is that I may not be reading this correctly, but if the police safety director is hired, and if it is hired, and that person is not available, those responsibilities are now taken over by the business administrator?
I, I think that she's in the chain of she, or rather, the position is in the chain of command. If I recall correctly, I did this a while ago, but I believe there is a reference to chain of command. Is that correct?
Right.
That's what you're referring to.
Actually, I think you're incorrect.
Okay.
Personally, I'm trying to understand the language. At what point in time might the borough administrator have to take on those responsibilities?
What section?
So this is section 2-13.3, the public safety director or in his or her absence.
Oh, that's, that's.
Borough administrator shall.
That's, no, no, you are incorrect, you are reading that incorrectly. That is a specific statutory provision that applies for who can be the appropriate authority. That's completely, has nothing to do with an administrator taking over the public safety director's division. No. Well, it's not. If you read the, uh, if you read that ordinance, you will see, that's not, that's an amendment of an existing ordinance that we have right now. That's an amendment of an existing ordinance that we have.
What does that mean?
Uh, the, the appropriate authority in that statute is defined, you can define it in accordance with that statute, however that statute reads.
I, I got the question, if she is the borough or whoever, she leaves, is, they ever don't have the responsibility of the public safety director at any point in time? If one is not available, or.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the borough administrator is now not stepping in at any point in time.
The borough administrator is not stepping in at any point in time with respect to the public safety director position. the public safety director position.
That's the question.
This, the section that you are referring to is an amendment of an existing ordinance, and it's consistent with the state statute. It's in here.
Oh, you can understand why I would question that, right?
Yeah, okay.
It appears as if she would signal.
Okay, but, but just so you see, that's section one of this ordinance, has, it's, the reason why is because in my review, I looked at all applicable ordinance, I looked at the fire department.
No, that's good, you answered the question.
Okay. There is one other thing that I want to tell you.
Well, I have one.
Okay, there is one other thing I want to tell you. This is not just to address the perception of litigation, there are other things going on that need to be addressed in a comprehensive manner, and that's what this is.
I hope we were first on that, if we're asking.
Yes.
I just, actually, I just looked up the statute.
Thank you very much.
I just looked up the statute, says as used in this section, appropriate authority means the mayor, manager, or such other appropriate executive or administrative officer, such as the full-time director of public safety, or the governing body, or any designated committee or member thereof, and go on, but, so, so just so we're on the same page.
I'm sorry, I was reading something, what?
It says that the appropriate authority means the mayor, manager, or such other appropriate executive or administrative officer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, an administrative officer or an executive officer, it also says, correct?
Correct, so that person will be responsible for the overall, if in fact there is no safety director, that, that's what I'm, I'm reading, is that the, there, there is no, if the public safety director is absent, then this appropriate authority will now be responsible for the overall performance of the police department, correct?
Yes, it's not correct, that's correct. It's not the day-to-day public safety director.
How do we know that by reading this, though?
Well, you, you have to understand when the term appropriate authority is raised.
We don't have any more, it's great.
I, I'm sorry, I, I can't, I can't really get, I can't really explain all of the legal bases at eleven o'clock at night.
I, I understand.
I can tell you, just so you understand, that that statute has to do specifically with police departments.
Yes, it does, I see it.
Okay. And it has to do specifically with responsible for the performance, isn't that correct? Overall performance of the police department.
Members' chief, police powers and duties, yes.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about the public safety director duties.
Anybody else from the public? Yes.
Frank Paddy, thirty Dillon Place. I want to meet everybody, I'm not looking to add to it, but I am now more confused following about this whole subject, which I'm personally not a fan of. But my question is this, if there's an emergency in a town with the appointment of this new person, who has the control? Let's just say, for example, there was an incident at the schools, and it was, God forbid, a terrible incident that we read about in the papers all day, who makes the call on what the police department does?
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes operationally, nothing.
Correct.
Thank you for answering my question.
Aaron Guy, twenty seventy Alford Street. One item I didn't expect to have to address, but at the last meeting, Ms. McMarlowe, you questioned Mr. Verse about IAs and how he knows you're involved in IAs. It was, thank, it didn't, sitting at the last meeting, did not realize.
You have to stay to this ordinance.
I am.
No, you're not.
I am.
You're going beyond it.
Because this has to do with you voting on this ordinance.
You're going beyond it, you're going beyond it.
It has to do with your voting on this ordinance, and at the last meeting.
We have a legal opinion that she can vote.
And I want to know how.
She just told you.
The borough attorney, noting that I am one forty-six, at the last meeting, Ms. McMarlowe accused herself on it, which means that I'm going to feel if it's turning to the air.
It has nothing to do with, no, this is for the ordinance, you're, you're stuck in another month, okay?
I guess you don't want to hear about it.
No, you're in another month, that was last month, this is this month, okay?
All right, let's move on. Um, one, our police department is an excellent department and functions well. You may disagree, but most of the residents, and every resident in town that I have spoken to thinks highly of them and thinks they are doing a fabulous job. That's one. Two, you have said in this ordinance that the reason for this is because of all these legal cases, all these losses, yet the requirements for your public safety director are not a law school, not someone who has experience even as a power legal, who might be able to.
I think you're creating a false narrative in your facts, okay?
Excuse me, I am going to read.
When you state your opinion as fact, that's fake news, okay?
Excuse me, I'm going to read here.
When you state opinion as fact, it's not fact, it's just your opinion.
The public safety director, job experience, qualifications or position, education or experience.
I guarantee we're not hiring you.
He appoints you, shall possess a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university, which makes the coursework, and I could go on, or give the alternative.
It's a liaison.
What's your experience after you?
It's a liaison position.
Excuse me, I am reading here.
No, excuse me, excuse me.
I have questions.
You have not lived in my shoes for a year and a half and watched the dysfunction at the senior level of this police department, okay?
I have lived in this town for forty years.
The officers themselves are great, they're great people, they have families, we want to protect their careers, and you're just here on autopilot every week.
I am here for forty years, and I have never seen a dysfunctional a mayor and council in their relationship with the police department.
That's right, and you know, that's right, and the people you talk to who pay you fifty dollars to talk to you every Monday, that's different, okay? All right, you're packed, you're packed, you should talk to other people, not just your pack, there's other people in this town.
Excuse me, I have a floor now. I'm talking about the ordinance, now.
So, pack it up, come on.
Excuse me. Oh, you're wrong.
She's had enough, she's had hours of our time, you've had hours.
The qualification.
Move on, move on.
Excuse me, the qualification of this position in no way gives the person who you are setting up in this position the ability to manage the police department.
That's right.
In addition, you set up at the beginning of the year, this job requirements for a patrolman, and you required a college degree, not a college degree or other experience. So here you are setting up a position in the police department to manage the police department with lesser qualifications than an entry-level patrolman. Number one, excuse me, number two, is your qualifications.
We, we've all read it, we've all read it, we know what's in there.
Now, I want to discuss.
We don't need you to read it, you're not discussing.
I'm allowed to discuss it.
You're not discussing.
I'm allowed to discuss it. You must say you are invading my personal rights as a resident.
Okay, so, but you do not have an unleading, you really don't.
Excuse me, I have the word, it says here that the police, this public safety director has to respond to police and community disasters, and may assume command of the same, performs patrol duties as a supplement to the activities of police officers. I, that is an incursion into my rights as a resident. You are putting a layperson in a police position.
No, you misunderstood, they're not operational, yes.
Oh, I understand, performs patrol duties sounds pretty much like a police position.
You stopped listening, you stopped listening.
Also, number seven, provides supervision over all criminal internal affairs and police disciplinary investigations.
We've read that.
That sounds like, I'm commenting on my comments on this ordinance, and I'm allowed to do that. That's what the public portion is, that's why you have a public portion, so me and any other resident can comment on what you are putting through. And I'm going to continue my comments. This is no, this is an incursion into the rights and into the, uh, safety that we as residents have to have our rights.
Now, that's fear mongering, there you go again, you're fear mongering, you're pleading fear where there shouldn't be any. Go ahead.
In addition.
You're just making things up now, go ahead.
I read it, in addition, number sixteen, responds to and resolves, is above and sensitive, fits the point to itself, the points, manages IAs, that's all here, that's all here, and that is not, that is police business. I'm sorry, you are trained very much into police business in doing this.
Thank you, other town, we're following the law, okay?
No, you're not.
To be very brief, my recollection of reading it, my recollection of reading it, it said that there's no change, Jerry Miss once asked me, he said that there was no change in operational procedures, but my recollection when I read it was something, I don't remember the exact wording, but this person should assume command and control when there is a public emergency, how is that not?
Well, there, there obviously will need to be procedures set up for that to occur, right?
Well, there's obviously.
No, there's a chain of command within the police department.
There is a chain of command. All right, in my experience, public safety directors don't take over emergencies, because it's permissible.
It's permissible.
It's permissible.
The county asked you if somebody, with the contrit, there was a.
Wait a minute, but it doesn't say he has to.
That's not our, that's not our intention, there is a chain of command at the police department, which will always be followed.
I understand it's not your intention, but it's possible that the way it's now written.
And the PSD is above the chief.
Yes, that's my concern, and he can assume command and control in a town of urgency.
We will always respect the chief's bill of rights, they have rights, we'll respect the chain of command.
We don't have to, we already said.
We are following the ordinances.
If you don't set this up for you, what about the next guy?
Yeah, it's perfectly readable for the next guy, too.
We're setting it up because of the fire guy, actually, but that's another story. Anybody else?
The chief's command and control seems pretty hot to this man, I don't know.
Yes, um, I have a few comments on the ordinance.
Name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie Fair, forty-nine, thirty-eight. First of all, Mayor, you yourself, you're on a many times, the reason for this position is lawsuits, lawsuits, lawsuits.
That's one, that's one other reason.
It doesn't matter if you have other reasons, the fact is, part of the reason you're stating is lawsuits. Mrs. McMarlowe is involved in lawsuits with the borough and the police department. How can she constantly vote on this position?
No, she's not, you're mistaking, you're mistaking facts.
I disagree with you, I disagree with the attorney. This, this is a.
Now, you're making up facts, okay? And the fact that somebody sues you doesn't make it a blanket that you're conflicted forever, people have to function, government has to function, and that's what you need to learn, because ever since you've come in here tonight.
I think I know a lot more about how.
I don't think so, because you're just being disruptive, right? Yeah, no, I don't think so, you, you know how to be political, you know how to be political, you're doing a very good job at that, and you're getting a lot of applause, but you're not being productive.
That is not true, and first, this is my time to speak.
You've had plenty of time tonight, now.
On the ordinance, and I have comments. You stated part of the reason to make this position was lawsuits. Mrs. McMarlowe was involved in those lawsuits, that is a comment, she should not be voted.
The, the reason was because the lawsuits are being mishandled by the management of the police department, okay? And it's, it's your tax dollars and yours and yours and yours that are being jeopardized.
You're hiring this position, that position, doing this, or apparently we're going to extort, but don't even mention it.
Okay, it's time to finish, it's time to finish.
My second comment is.
You, you keep making that up, you don't have to do that for rehab, but go ahead.
Whether you state what your intention is or isn't about this safety director taking command of a situation, you're stating that that is not your intent, but it's in the ordinance, in writing, so if that is not your intent, take it out, take it out of the ordinance.
We're following you, thank you.
And as a resident, I'm not finished, as a resident, as a former employee, former administrator, municipal clerk of this borough, I can tell you.
Is that what this is about?
No, I couldn't care less. On it, this police department is the best police department, second to none. Chief Chiaki is the most dedicated public servant I have ever met in my entire life. He gives twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, volunteering for the fire department in addition to being the police chief. I don't think you find that in any town.
Thank you.
I think what you're doing is wrong, and you should reconsider this position, it is a burden on the taxpayers, it is absolutely not necessary, because this community has faith in our police chief and in our police department.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah.
Lauren, please, four, well, as I, first of all, I'd like to say that Ms. Fair makes this part of the community, she does not need a name. As someone who has read the lawsuits, every one of them, unlike apparently a community member, council members, including people who have been sitting up there while they were filed, I do not have confidence in the senior management of the police chief, or specifically this police chief. He's named between many of them, the allegations are too serious, and the fact that none of them have ever been investigated is very disturbing.
Mary O'Shea, twelve Irving Avenue. I recall in two thousand six, there was an ordinance that was approved by the full mayor and council, and they are perisy, were supportive of it, to have a public safety director. At that time, the police department, which included members that are currently in the police department, did not object to it. The council people did not object to it. I've read in the paper that Malar is voting on a public safety director tomorrow night, Edgewood has a public safety director. Joe Delaney was chief of police in Paramus and became the public safety director in Ramsey twenty years ago, at that time, not there now, at that time. And Michael Vitrin retired from the Palisade Park Police Department and became the public safety director, and he had also been the fire chief and the police chief, so that happens in other towns. We're not singular in that aspect, many, many volunteers served in dual capacities. The fire department is a volunteer organization, I'm glad you took them out of the, out of the ordinance, but I do believe that there are times when somebody needs to intervene in situations, and I think that you need to have a public safety director also for the police department for continuity as retirements. Chief Chiaki is getting close to retirement, the next two captains are, you know, up there in the number of years they've been in the department, you would have a lot of retirements very close together, and you need some kind of continuity of running the department and to offer advice to junior officers as they're promoted. So I think it's a very good idea to have a public safety director, and I remember reading in the paper when Michael Vitrin took the job in Palisade Park, it was not a hundred thousand dollar a year job, I think he was getting like twenty-six or thirty-five thousand dollars a year, it was like an advisory supplemental position to assist the chief, so I think that it's a little bit overstated.
Thank you.
Janice, from East Jones Street. In regards to this position that you're looking to create, you guys thought of simply, it didn't seem like you think that there's something missing was in the police department, why not better what you already have? Why not invest in them to make them better so that you don't need a PSD? We're such a small town, this almost seems like a babysitter job, and our police department is amazing from personal experience. Why not just make what you already have better?
Thank you.
I just want to say regarding the police department, the year that we saw Chiaki came out of the year was two thousand and ten, by two thousand and eleven, of course, there'd been nineteen officers, and there have been three whistleblowers out of that force of nineteen, that's quite a neat number of officers, so even the residents aside, what the residents feel, the officers themselves, three out of nineteen is quite a strong vote, and we listen to that, they're, they're fine officers, so I think that's important, three out of nineteen, and not all the residents agree, that all have confidence in, we all have officers in this department, and I think we all agree that we have a pretty stellar department overall, so why not look at the, the management?
Thank you. Yes.
My question over eleven Fifth Street, I'm not going to add to the debate whether I need the public safety officer, but there seems to be still confusion, because Frank Paddy asked a question that was answered differently than when Mr. Miss asked it, so if there is, first we'll go and lock that, this public safety person is the one who's now in charge of that situation.
No, you have not heard that correctly, or somebody's gone the wrong way? It was answered consistently both ways, both times, the chief is in charge, the captains are in charge, there's a chain of command.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, so if it's written differently.
The way it's written doesn't change anything.
It's written differently, and if the hierarchy is written.
Operationally, it cannot be changed, okay, by law.
And if the hierarchy reads that if the public safety officer is incapacitated, that then the next in line becomes the mayor or somebody else other than the chief, it seems like there's.
It's not the mayor, it's not the mayor, I, I specifically took myself out of it.
So who, who is it? I'm not asking, because I may react.
Okay, so.
First of all, they're not operational.
I'm not sure what you're asking about.
They're not operational.
So this person does not oversee the police operations, is that?
The chief still has all of the chief bill of rights, he's in charge of that department on a day-to-day basis. The public safety director position is a, a governance position, a governance position, it's to create policies.
Okay, so.
And, and guide, and guide them in enforcing policies.
Okay.
And if there is an enforcement, then suggest to the mayor and council, here's what you need to do to improve this kind of situation.
But how come that's not in the ordinance?
Yes, it is in the ordinance.
I'm looking at the duties and functions, it says, responds to any police and or fire emergency community disaster, may assume command of the same.
Right.
Perform police duties.
Command.
And I, I guess, and I could, this, this, like, I'm not, I'm not up here telling you don't have this position, or you have this position, it seems like there are a lot of questions, I'm very concerned with the, why do we need to have this tonight, to table this and figure out, are there things written in there that are being perceived to be problems by the public, which answers, yes, because multiple people have come up and voiced concerns, there's a fear mongering, if it reads that this person will be in charge, you just said that you have to look at some of the things, so why vote on something that you have said twice, I have to look at that, or that's not what it's meant to be, or that's not really what it's going to be, if that's how it reads.
Okay, thank you.
That's not my point.
Thank you.
I want to make a motion to table this.
Anybody else? Yes.
I make a motion to table this ordinance.
You can't do that now, we're in public discussion. We wanted to hear from you this morning.
I think Mike has said it really well, there is, there is a question, you don't know who, and you could.
If you say your name and add, say your name and address.
There's no doubt here that it says that this person responds to police and or fire emergency community disasters, and may assume command of same, performs patrol duties as supplemental to activities of, of police officers, it says it, so all the lawyers up there should know, if it's in writing, it can happen, it may be superseded by police law, in which case it doesn't belong here, I know it does say specifically in the ordinance that police, police and fire laws supersede, however, we know it does, so therefore it shouldn't be in here. Regarding the issue of the IAs, I probably do have to agree, based on the vote, it's possible that any one of you could have IAs with the police department, against the police department, I would strongly suggest whoever that person may be, if anybody does not vote, because I do believe that this does open you up to another lawsuit, because while you may say specifically that this is a procedural decision.
Are you threatening a lawsuit? Are you threatening a lawsuit? Are you threatening a lawsuit? Because it really matters. Let me tell you something. It matters little to us if you threaten us. We are here to protect the town.
You can't take it with somebody else.
We are actually here, you're here to help your party. We're here to help the town. Think differently.
Mayor, 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 and even Carol knows, generally, I'll tell her I'll command, you know, the fire department. But in this case, I am not ready. I am saying you are opening a conflict.
There you go.
I am saying anybody has a conflict.
That's what you do, right? You come and you threaten people.
Mayor, you have made it personal. You have mentioned the chief. You have mentioned the fire chief.
There is...
You have mentioned the being related.
I've commended the fire chief.
Oh, right, if he said him and his brother, you've got to listen to his face.
No, no, no. What you need to do is...
And you have to understand, you have to say about the ordinance.
I have plenty to say.
Other than attacking us.
I have plenty to say. You know what, it's a lot, you're getting paid for this. You said you took handle.
Yeah.
Any word that we...
I understand.
That the town...
Just attack everyone personally.
Go ahead.
So we make it so easy.
Yes.
Stick to the structure.
My issue with the ordinance is ordinance is not complete, this ordinance is not ready. You use attacking people's children to justify this. Mr. Lou and Mr. Park, I can't imagine you agree with this. I can't imagine in your home you accept the law, that you accept the fact that your children could be brought up in this as well, not now because they're minors, that you have adult children, and this is just something that is...
What are you talking about? What are you talking about? Seriously.
This is your justification, mayor, for the ordinance. Seriously.
Seriously.
Really, seriously.
You're not speaking about the ordinance.
This is your justification for the ordinance.
Norm, do you...
It's on... Yes, I feel strongly that this ordinance should be...
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
No, I believe strongly that this ordinance should, at least be tabled, at the most be voted down.
All right, have a motion to close.
But I think that all of the reasons that you are using for putting this through, they're invalid, they're mean, they're bullying. I think that's what...
All right, right on cue. That side is going to clap. We're going to close public session, and we're going to have a vote. Okay.
But I think we should keep you up later, and I really hope your family doesn't approve that you use...
I don't think we should bring my family into this, Ms. Lauren.
Oh, really?
But I did nothing wrong.
My kid didn't do anything.
No. Give a motion to close.
I wouldn't even go there, because you know what?
Yes, I talk to that captain.
It's going, really? I'll have you on camera now, Mario.
Go ahead.
Motion to close, please. Second.
You are so disgusting.
All in favor?
I can't...
All in favor? Okay. We need a motion.
I made the motion. I made the motion to...
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
As amended.
I made a motion to table, and I was told I was during a public...
No, no, you have to make it now, but she just made hers. She just made hers.
No, she didn't. She didn't finish.
Take the vote.
Take the vote.
What do you want?
I want to make a motion to table.
Table what?
This ordinance.
Which ordinance?
The whole thing, not the...
Which whole thing?
Are you serious right now? Okay.
It has to be specific.
Okay, fine. I made a motion to table, ordinance 17-10, as amended, first of all. Secondly, I want to also, well, let's make the motion. I made a motion.
Okay. Let's have a vote. This is to amend.
No, this is to table.
This is to table. I meant to say table. Thank you, everybody, for correcting me.
E. Park, and who was the second? Okay. Councilperson Versa? Motion to table?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
No.
M. Park?
No.
Wu?
I don't know why, I'm sorry.
I know what's happening. So, mayor?
So let's go to 1711 bond ordinance.
Hold on, hold on. One more. If they have a... That sign that they did that, let them tell you now what language that they have an issue with, so that the boroughs can...
Right, if you look at duties and functions, if you look at number one, it says, "Response to any police and fire emergency community disasters." First of all, this is going to be a civilian, correct, that we're hiring?
Well, that's the part with Charlie.
Well, if it's a civilian, you can't have a new police duty. That's...
All right. If you guys want to talk, go outside, otherwise just got to stay here and be quiet. It's not late, it's early. We're only halfway there. No, we need language. If you guys want to be productive, you have to give us some language.
Why don't we have the person who was paying to write the language, do it the right way?
And do it the correct way next time.
No, let her know.
First of all, you should be respectful.
Oh, you're being very respectful. Look who's talking there.
No, no, you can do whatever you want to me, I don't care, but with her...
You want to talk about respect?
Guys, I respect the fact that you're on the table, just asking for clarification, what point you would like clarification...
I like the whole thing removed.
All right, never mind, never mind. They're just going to game it. We're going to take care of this. We're going to talk to Councilman Wu about what language we need, and then he will... All right, let's go to 1711. This is the first reading on the bond ordinance appropriating the $1,325,000 for various improvements to the Witty Field recreational complex. I'm going to open to the public.
No. This is just the public...
I move it, okay.
So let me read it to be the right way. 1711, first reading of ordinance with a public hearing scheduled for August 31st. Bond ordinance to authorize various improvements to Witty Field recreational complex in, by, and for the Borough of Engleboucle in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1,325,000 to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. I need a motion? I need a second. Mayor, may I take a roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilperson Versa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
I don't think you can...
Okay, so there'll be no renovation to the field? Thank you, Gloria, Ed, and Ellen?
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. And Andy, thank you very much for your help.
Excuse me, there's a meeting that's still going on. Mr. Misk? No, you don't have to look at me, but please don't speak. Thank you. Thank you. I have to tell you something. As somebody who worked for months, and months, and months, with our borough professionals in trying to find a solution, as someone who reached out to all of you repeatedly in trying to find a compromise, I understand you're running for election here, I understand Joe Perisi was against this from as long as I ever worked with Joe Perisi, and ever having any type of improved, excuse me, you can respond to anything you want, because I remember...
I didn't say a word.
Okay? You can respond, though, when I'm done, all right? Because, Ed, I sat here and I listened to you make false statement after false statement after false statement. For the record, Mr. Hippelit never said we were going to not address drainage. Mr. Hippelit never said any of the things that you represented to the public. He never said that. What he did say was, A, the current state of our field is not safe. B, with the amount of playing that we have on that field, it will not sustain with grass. This is what he said. C, we needed to find a solution, and we needed to come up with something and get it done by this meeting, okay? You all knew this, and I find it very irresponsible that you sit here with those smug looks on your faces and think it's okay, yeah, you can smile, Ed, but you know what? Every kid that's going to not have a park to be able to play next season because you three think it's funny, okay? You had every opportunity to reach out and make this work. You should be ashamed of yourselves, you weren't elected to do this, you were elected to find solutions, not to play to your political people out there, and, excuse me, and send out false advertisements and false emails with my name on there about every subject. That's what's going on, and the people at the audience know what they're doing. I have to tell you, you should never let politics enter into recreation, and what you did tonight is disgusting. Disgusting.
Are you done? So essentially, what's happened here is the town has... I haven't recognized you yet. The town has lost. Your mob has won this one, but that's it. And the children have lost.
The children have lost.
The children have lost, and I, you know, I will explain it.
Okay, may I respond that way? Now that she's lying and cried like a baby, let me finish.
I didn't lie like a baby.
Go ahead, speak.
Speak with facts.
Oh, I get facts, Mike.
Oh, you don't have facts.
Oh, yeah.
No, you don't.
So the facts are, you don't like the fact that I didn't like your proposal.
Not at all. That's who...
That's you don't like. So I'm all for it.
I don't like the fact that you're lying to the public.
Can I finish, please? I didn't interrupt you.
You're lying to the public.
I didn't interrupt you.
Then don't lie.
Well, actually, the truth of the matter is, Ed Versa sat next to me last month at caucus and said, I like that one also.
But I, and I told you, but apparently you only hear what you want to hear.
And you developed one.
It's not sustainable. All grass is not sustainable. That is what he said. The borough engineer said...
So wait, so if you're going to spend $1.3 million on an 80% unsustainable field? Genius.
Mr. Hippelit, Mr. Hippelit, you said...
Great idea. I'm not only just...
I can't hear you, Mr. Hippelit. You didn't say that. Did you hear what you said? He never said it. You're lying. You are lying.
You just said...
He said. He never said...
I said that by adding the term on one of the three fields, or increase your play and increase your playability or increase your... I understand. I don't agree. What's your problem?
And all grass is not sustainable.
Remember who got up there and spoke without, have respect? Have respect. I'm allowed, it's entitled to my opinion. You don't have to like it.
You're gaming it. All right, let's go.
Okay, I'm letting the children, okay, now I'm letting them... I say, do the field in grass. Grass, field, all grass.
It's not sustainable. What don't you understand about that?
I don't want to agree with you.
But you're addicted. You're addicted, not an engineer, okay?
All right, so... Let's move on. Okay, let's move on. All right, I'm going to, we've been here way too long, so I'm going to, I'm going to skip over committee reports. Actually, no, we'll then...
Remembering November.
Let's do, all right, no, let's do committee reports. All right, come on, guys. All right, committee reports. Mr. Versa, do you have anything other than this here?
Lighting is good.
Lighting is good? Yeah.
Actually, not. We want it at the field.
Not really. We don't have it at the field anymore. Councilwoman Ellen Park.
The board doesn't have it there either.
Councilwoman Park, do you have anything to report from your committees?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Councilwoman O., anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilwoman McMorro, do you have anything to report on your committees?
I'll talk about community events.
All right, community events. We have a big one coming up.
Community Night Out is August 22nd. I encourage the residents to come. We had a great turnout last year, about 700 people. The kids had a phenomenal time. I've been approached by many residents, asking to volunteer, asking to make sure that we're going to have this event again. We are. There will be lights there because Mr. Perino and my thick life will be donating them, so we will have lights that night. After that, there, September 17th, we have the second annual 5K run. People are starting to sign up. That's another event that we've had great feedback with. Other than that, Richard asked me to make a statement about community pass again. We're implementing that so that the residents have an easy signing up for programs for, you know, all of the activities. And also, I want to thank Catherine and, no, Richard's not here. A promise that we had made in working, communicating with Councilman Wu on communications, we are going to be implementing a new system of emailing the residents for better communications. We're going to be using Constant Contact. I know Catherine, I thank you, we pulled a lot together in this last couple of weeks in getting all of these things done. The residents are going to benefit tremendously, because you know what? You see, you have to have good communication with your town to let them know what's really going on. Prior administrations didn't want communication to be that, they didn't want it great, because they didn't want to know what's going on. But we're going to make sure, good or bad, whatever's going on, you're going to know about it. You're going to come out to meetings, you're going to be able to understand, you're going to get these emails. We're doing that for you, and we're also working on a newsletter from the town. Catherine's been working on that with me as well, and hopefully it'll be semi-annual so that you can get the important facts and updates of what's going on at the town. For example, mayor, and I thank, again, you and Catherine for the ambulance corps being brought up to be stationed up here. I never knew the ambulance corps left, so I'd like to know how the ambulance corps left, because when I was on the council in 2012, they were here, and they were always stationed here, and all of a sudden I found out they're not stationed here anymore. How does that happen, that the council doesn't know that their ambulance corps is no longer stationed in town? I mean, who made that decision? Something like that, someone has a heart attack, that's likely death. So I commend the two of you for catching that.
Thank you, Catherine.
And thank you both, and...
Catherine did the lead on that.
Thank you very much.
Just on community night, I want to add again that we're going to have the Office of Concern food pantry truck there. Again, there's 81,000 people in Marin County who are food insecure. Please bring bags. If your neighbors aren't going, bring their bags of non-perishable food items. It's really important. And we're also going to have the 4Le library there again this year, so if you didn't get a card last year and still don't have one, you can get one there, or you can renew the one that you have. Councilman Park, you have a...
Yeah, just want to thank the police department for breaking back national level on August 1st. I know I had a good time, I can't say I had a good time. I think you really had a good time. Also, just want to thank Martin and Catherine for continuing to review your vote for your position, thanks for including us part of the process. Orvet, there's a PTA fundraiser, I think they approached the council to see if they One event is a PTA fundraiser, I think they approached the council to see if they could potentially, because they have to do some work on the upper school field, and they approached the council to see if they could do it at Witty Field, but I think the One Event is doing everything they can to make sure that they can have a PTA fundraiser on September 24th. You know, I think the project, they're going to do something behind upper school.
Committee reports are done.
I want to just appoint alternate number three to the planning board. I'm appointing Fancy Correa. And, no, that's my appointment.
Can you, will you provide me with her contact information?
Okay, yes, I have a motion to adjourn. You have new business, is something new?
Just one item. Is it possible to propose, I don't know if it's proper to make a motion for the moment, but to do the field in all grass, or consider that option since this other one failed?